I'd call the June 6th Oak Ridge Town Council meeting to order. First order of business is an invocation. I'd ask Patrick Kowalski to go up and pitch it for the invocation, standard, or variable?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that are gathered here tonight. We thank you for all the public servants that we have, all the volunteers that we have. We thank you for this beautiful town that we have and our beautiful nation. We pray for peace and hopefully the conflicts will take care of themselves. We pray for all the people here in your name, amen.
Next order of business is to approve the agenda. There's one minor adjustment. We're not going to have the minor recent station because Ashford was not able to be here. So if there's a motion to present the agenda, please make the motion to remove that item.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, name, agenda is approved. We now approve the minutes of the May 2nd, 2024 regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the May 2nd, May 2nd regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you don't have the correct solution, populations and outspans, is that correct? Would like to get, do we have anyone from the Sheriff's Department here tonight? If not, do we have copies of the report in the back? Or is it online?
They are in the packet. I'm not sure if they're already in the back or not.
Okay.
If anybody wants one, they can ask.
Yeah, if you'd like to have the sheriff's report, just let us know. We'll get you a copy of that. Report from the Oak Ridge Fire Department? I did see someone from there. This head guy this time.
Hello, everyone. Chief Ken Gibson of Oak Ridge Fire Department. So for the month of May, we ran eighty-six calls. Most of them being EMS calls. That was a total of forty-two, thirty-six calls for service, meaning someone's locked out of their car, animal rescue, anything other than fires, false alarms, five, and then just a few other things on top of that. I would like to say our new training facility is up and running. A few people came out to tour Saturday. We're getting a lot of things done that we really weren't able to do before. Our neighboring departments are using it also. And it is a model because we're having departments from all over North Carolina and South Carolina, different places come to look at it. If you haven't seen it, stop by one day and we'll do our best to get you up there and take a look at it.
It was very impressive. Oh, before I forget, if you do have access to any pallets or straw, they would be very happy to have the pallets and straw because that's what they use to burn.
Yeah, that's the only thing we can legally burn there is non-treated lumber, pallets and straw. For safety, this month is getting warmer. People are starting to grill out. So this kind of shocked me. There were well over twenty thousand injuries a year just from grilling. So that seems like a lot to me. But be sure to use your propane charcoal grills outside. We've all heard through the years that people have passed away from COVID-19 poisoning because of that very reason. Children and pets need to stay three feet apart or away from your grilling area. Keep it clean, grease buildup, a big cause for fires. And also never leave your grill unattended. And with that, we would like to make a presentation to a couple of young folks. So this is a scholarship we do at the department. It's called Strengthen Honor Fund. And it was set in place by Roland and his wife Sarah Rosoli. Their son Andrew Rosoli had joined the department in early 2000. He was a member, then left, joined the Marines, and he was mortally wounded in combat in 2005. So they set up a scholarship and we issued that for college every year. So the two recipients this year are Wilson Vanderf and Logan Bryant. You can come on. So Wilson will be attending UNCT and Logan will be on her sophomore year at Appalachian. Two wonderful young people here. If you can't tell him, he's in the fighting corps. He loves the new train of power.
Thank you. Thank you as always. Thank you. All right, we're now going to move into public hearings. I'll give you a general overview of public hearings and each one will get a little more detail. But public hearings, there'll be a twenty-minute period for people who wish to speak in favor of the public hearing. Twenty minutes for people who wish to speak in opposition. And then there'll be five minutes each for rebuttals for people that are in favor and opposition. Once the period of open, a public comment is closed, it's discussion by council, council only. Counsel could ask questions to anyone they like, but at that point, no more public input unless counsel asks for something from them. With that, would you introduce the first public hearing? Mr. Taylor?
Your gallows, Sam. Could you be said to? Our first public hearings about the closing of a public trail easement within the Ashford subdivision now in its Green Horse LLC. The request, as I've just said, is the closing of the trail easement along the western boundary of Ashford subdivision. Green Horse LLC and its representatives for requests to voluntarily grant the town of Oak Ridge a trail easement within the Ashford subdivision. Members of the planning and zoning board made this request during the subdivision approval process for the subdivision. Green Horse LLC voluntarily granted to the town of Oak Ridge an eight-foot public trail easement along the western portion of the Ashford subdivision. Representatives for Green Horse LLC have made application to remove this public trail easement granted to the town. Within our land use plan, there is a recommendation with policy 2.2.2 in lower density areas where sidewalks are not practical, alternative pedestrian accommodations such as trails, greenways, etc. should be incorporated into neighborhood design and should be used as linkages between neighborhoods whether or not vehicular connections are available.
All right. If you're going to speak in favor, you're speaking in favor of approving this request. I would like you to raise your hand, identify when you come up, state your name and address. I would encourage you to reconsider the fact that twenty minutes can go by pretty quickly. So if you're going to, if multiple people are going to come up, please try your best not to repeat what's already been spoken. Because like I said, you want to be conservative with your time. Twenty minutes can go by pretty darn quick. All right, is there anyone else, anyone that would like to speak in favor of this? Yes, sir. Up to this microphone, come up to the microphone, please, and state your name and address. The town clerk will keep time.
Right, Patrick Hayward here on behalf of the developer. I'd like to hand you some notebooks and be very cognizant of the time. We would just, please, second, I wanted to make sure to check to see who was here.
If I could give Mr. Hayward's address?
When he comes back, I'll listen for that. Mr. Thomas has been, Mr. Thomas is going to hand you a notebook. Before you get started, again, state your name and address. My name is Patrick Hayward. I'm here for the developer. I live at 350 A2 Oak Street in Greensport, North Carolina. Thank you. I'm in the town of, which I hope you don't hold against me. So I'll jump right into it because I know a lot of people are going to speak on this subject tonight. The first one is an unpleasant subject. And when you get there, you'll take a look at it. I am going to ask that Mr. I believe that given his involvement in a tab one, Mr. Hartman should recuse himself from voting in this. He actually is a public supporter of the Mountain to Sea Trail. Not only given him monetization, monetary donations, but also lending his name to it as a tab one. But it's entirely up to Mr. Hartman. If he believes that he has the ability to not give the perception of a new body, then that's fine. No, we'll take up that there.
So the basic of it is this. Without getting into whether or not Mr. Brady voluntarily gave the easement or it was something he felt compelled to do, to get his plat recorded, I think we can leave that aside. The actual issue really at this point is, is it effective? And it's not. Mr. Thomas will explain to you why he thinks it is. At tab five, you will see the wall, North Carolina General Statute 160D 806. And the very first line says, "The approval of the plat shall not be deemed to constitute the acceptance of the local government or public of the dedication of any street or other ground, public utility line, or other public facility shown on the plat." So even if the easement was found to be, it was voluntarily given, which I'm going to give up on that argument. I don't want to get into that argument. It's not effective because we revoked it before any governing body accepted it. Not only does that's the general statute that says that's the case law, but if we skip on down through a couple of other things, we'll see that tab six. If we look at the very first one, D, dedication and acceptance. "The approval and recordation of the plat constitutes dedication to and acceptance by the jurisdiction and the public of the right of each public street, alley, facility, or transient. The approval and recordation of the plat does not constitute acceptance." And it'll go on to say that this body needs to have actually approved that, which denied it. There's some case law that says the exact same thing. Again, trying to be mindful of other people here. At tab seven, you'll see the craft versus town in Mount Olive, which is a North Carolina court of appeals case that interprets that. And if we flip on through that a little bit, I am trying to go way too quick, I'm sure. But on page six of seven, we go down, up halfway on the first column, what appears to be a long minimum two. We'll see the plaintiff next argues that the town denies of the offer of dedication by use and control by formal resolution. And there are several other things that they go into, but essentially that carries today. And the court of appeals said that you have to actually accept it. There is no other mechanism. You have to accept it before it's revoked. It has been revoked, and so now you can accept it. Well, you can do whatever you want to, but according to the law, it seems like that's going to be difficult. If we look at tab eight, we're going to see another case, Waterway Drive, Corporate Owners Association versus the town, you see the point. Which if we look at page six of seventeen, we'll see the exact same proposition. At the end of, it's actually sort of the end of the white, and it's counted five fifty. It says, "Plaintiff correctly asserts that the resolution does not mention either front street or waterway to catch all provisions pertaining only to dedications made from the date of the resolution." And it goes on to further say that, this one says, "The further the resolution can, has to be accepted by the mayor in that particular municipality because they had the governing authority to say." It's on the second page, first paragraph. So at any time, that could have been accepted. That is the law. Then we move on to tab nine. I don't mean the pile on, but the case law is very, very straightforward. Ungar versus Winnebago, also a court of appeals case, nineteen ninety-two, interpreting the same statutes. And if we move over to, if you're there, we may on tab nine, it's on page four of six. At the bottom of the page, again, I would be brief. Same argument. Just because the plat was recorded, if you don't accept it, if you don't accept it before it's revoked, it ceases to exist. And it's been revoked and wasn't accepted. So that's pretty much it. The other problems we've got is tab ten. The easement is not wide enough to accommodate the Mountain to Sea Trail. It doesn't fit within what they require. Hopefully, Mr. Thomas will speak to because we invited the officials to come out to look at it. It's a very rough terrain. It does not accommodate this type of pathway. And when you look at your own tree ordinances and trees, and it's what you hear in tab ten, you're going to have some issues with trying to even put anything in there. If, if it can work and it's not wide enough. Aside from not being wide enough, aside from not meeting the requirements of the Mountain to Sea Trail, it doesn't go anywhere. There's nobody's going to argue anything different than that. It doesn't connect to anything, and it never will. There are a lot of residents here that are going to speak about that, but that's the bottom line really, is before here is a lot of discussion about something that probably is of no particular meaning. I know that the Mountain to Sea Trail is important to a lot of people. I understand that, but in this case, it's not going to be a Mountain to Sea Trail. It's simply not. It's not wide enough. It's, the terrain doesn't accommodate it, and it doesn't connect. So frankly, there's a lot of letters in here as well, but I won't waste your time because Mr. Thomas wrote some of the letters. I wrote some of them. So I'm assuming that you looked at them. I'm happy to answer your questions. From my own conclusive comments, I'll tell you that North Carolina General Statute is clear. It has to be accepted by you. That's all there is to it. And all of the case law that you will see says, "That's it. You have to accept it before it's revoked. Recording, recordation does not do it." And when you start to think about to yourself, "Well, what am I giving up here?" You're giving up nothing because it's not going anywhere. You have a lot of people sitting out here who are opposed to it, and I know that you listen to your constituents. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But I tried to be as brief as I could without boring any of you. Any questions will come later. What's happening? Any questions will come later. Thank you, sir. Anyone else who should speak in favor? Yes, sir?
Jonathan Delain, I'm at 7796 Polar Drive here in Oak Ridge, North Carolina. So I'm speaking on behalf of Bear Creek HOA and Kevin Breakfast Abstinence tonight because we've been working together on this. First, I want to acknowledge that Joe and Elaine, Joe Brady and what we just heard from Patrick, we stand in one hundred percent support of the removal of this trail, and that has been our stance the entire time. And we want to acknowledge that that is the issue between you and them, and we are in support of them at cost and everything that Mr. Hayward just said. So I want to, I want to say that, you know, a couple of things. One is, is everybody in the HOA has signed a petition against this, and everybody moved there many years ago not expecting this to show up. And the reason that they moved there were different from, you know, not coming in from this trail. That was quite a surprise to all of us in there. And I think, I don't want to rehash why they signed that petition, but the actual security, safety nuisance factor that was not signed up for. But what we took constructively, I want to give you an update on tonight. So Kevin and I constructively went and said, "Let's go find a better path." And so we have been working with the Mountain to Sea Trail on that better path, something that keeps the traffic in the woods, the community would enjoy it. The community actually is connected with. And we have found an alternative path. And so what we've been doing since then is we've set the vote, the town, you know, the town of Oak Ridge's trail committee with Mountain to Sea and the town of Summerfield because it includes an alternative path that can connect to Banderas, that can connect all the way down to the Burmell parts through the Piedmont Trail. And so that's an awesome trail, and it's based in the woods and it's actually a nice hike. One of the first things we agreed on, disagreed with, was that the existing easement, as highlighted, is only eight feet wide. It has a very expensive, possibly a couple hundred thousand dollar bridge to get over a ravine and massive construction required. And it's not a good trail. Now, step aside me personally, not on behalf of the HOA, again, it goes through my backyard, adjacent to my backyard, and it's really not a good trail to walk through people's, you know, exposed in their backyard. So we took that aside and agreed to that there's got to be a better one. We talked about the alternative path. And our intent was, if we can bring this alternative path together, can we delete this easement? And we left that meeting thinking that was a yes. We had one concern, and there was a member of the Oak Ridge Mountain to Sea Trail who said, "I don't want to give up that current easement the town has because then I lose my leverage with people of Bear Creek who can help broker this deal." I want you to think about that for a second because both Kevin and I felt that that was in very poor form. But that's why we need, if this is not immediately removed tonight, we're suggesting an alternative up here. If we can't get it removed and we can't get it removed in short order, we need the town to help us work collaboratively together to get a better trail for Mountain to Sea. And it's going to take some time, and it's going to take some good faith because we are operating in good faith. But when somebody, we don't want to operate as an HOA feeling like we've got a gun to our head that if we run into any sort of delay in getting the right trail that everybody wants done, that, you know, we're going to end up just building right in your backyard. That's how it felt. That's how it came across to me individually and to Kevin and I. We thought we had agreement that they would come here tonight and remove that, and they chose not to. They wrote us an email and said, "No, we're not doing that. We want old trails, even though Banderas is going to be forever out." And we haven't talked about the poor choice for this trail, for the Mountain to Sea Trail, this particular branch going through the Ashford subdivision. So putting that aside, I'm going to come with a positive spin on all of this. We have a chance tonight, and I implore you to please, let's consider resetting and starting to do the right thing together. A better trail through the creek and connecting into Summerfield and the Piedmont Trail and down into Banderas Farms is what everybody wants. And I think if tonight you can help us operate in good faith with the Mountain to Sea Trail, we're willing to take a spirit of conflict, should this not be removed, and even move it into one of collaboration and connect these communities and sell that trail on the merits of what it brings to each of those communities. Now, if you talk to the folks who've done this before in Summerfield, Piedmont Trail, it takes time, it takes multiple years because you've got to sell the trail on its merits to the people who are going to be impacted and using it, who want to use it in the neighborhoods going forward. So we're going to, it's going to take some time. So we're asking if it's not immediate. So we're asking, if it's not immediately removed or removed in short order, the alternative we would ask for is a ten-year moratorium on that current branch so that we can broker this deal. And I'm telling you, people are watching. A key Summerfield neighbor is here tonight in the crowd. There's many watching and saying, "Are these people going to do the right thing and work together and sell this trail on its merits? Because I'm only, you know, they want a key piece of this puzzle if we want to head in that direction." And there's others watching tonight. And I, quite frankly, I'd rather collaborate and get this done the right way. So I'm asking you as the town to do the right thing, as elected officials serving the communities, that this community wants to work together to do the right thing. Can you give us the time, the chance, if you don't remove it, to do so? Our preference is for removal, but if you don't do that, our alternative is, can you give us a moratorium to get this done right? Thank you.
How much time we have left?
Five minutes, seventeen seconds.
Anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Lindsay Clark, address is six eight one Sticks Koala Drive in Oak Ridge. Um, so overall, since the trail closure will not deprive any resident of interest in egress to property, I'm requesting closure of easement based on several factors, which I shared with you all previously in the email and passed out copies tonight. Um, so the following are procedural failures that led to the dilution of existence of statute trail easement. First, its very conception was in conflict with ordinance thirty-six thirty-three, which assigns responsibility to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for trail citing, public comment, planning, and rules and policies. It was instead suggested by a member of planning and zoning with personal ties to mountain to sea trail during preliminary plat review. Second, after the preliminary plat was given conditional approval, it was over a year before I believe the town received confirmation that updated documentation had been received and approved to satisfy the conditions for the conditional approval. Ordinance thirty-five dash six eighty C defines that if conditions are not met within sixty days, a preliminary plat quote shall be deemed denied. So I believe as of March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, the Ashford plat was de facto denied and ineligible for final plat approval. Third, after the developer was somehow convinced to put the public trail easement on the final plat, it was administratively approved. However, case law states that any deviation from ordinance standard is considered a variance subject to quasi judicial approval, not administrative approval. The public trail easement being absent from the preliminary plat that is required to be there for ordinance of P E X B, Table A two, is considered a variance from ordinance standard. The final plat of the trail easement is ineligible for administrative approval. Based on these failures, Mr. Taylor has a statutory obligation to revoke approval per one sixty D dash four zero three. The developer has already submitted a revised plat without the easement, which would then be eligible for approval in its place. In addition to the procedural issues, the specific public trail easement locations are reasonable and does not appear to the town's pedestrian plan, existing precedents, land use plan, or strategic plan. I provided the details previously, but I'll try to get through quickly. Uh, I want to point out, first of all, you all mentioned the land use policy two point two point two to incorporate the pedestrian accommodations into neighborhood design. This was not incorporated into the design, proofed by the fact that the preliminary plat was approved in January twenty twenty-two without the easement. And so kind of circling back to the earlier comment about the easement being required beyond the preliminary plat, I believe that's because the preliminary plat is the design of the neighborhood. So if you're pointing out the land use plan saying incorporate it into the design, it would need to be on the preliminary plat as per ordinance. It's not. Um, anyways, also, the strategic plan says to incorporate them as required by the ordinance. It's not required by ordinance. Conflicts with land use policy about seeking public involvement in trail cleaning, this was not done. It conflicts with the policy four point two point three to support pedestrian plan regulations. Uh, the pedestrian plan lays out specific S P T guidelines for footpaths, requiring certain clearance that this easement does not satisfy. So that was not done either. The pedestrian plan also proposes sidewalks and paved shoulders for pedestrian travel on the side of town, and the vast majority of the mountain to sea trail is along public roads and highways. In Oak Ridge specifically, there's segments of gravel path and sidewalks adjacent to roads of mountain to sea trail segments. This is a set precedent for utilizing these alternatives to run the mountain to sea trail adjacent to roadways where trails don't make sense. And land use policy five point three point one supports this alternative advocating for paved shoulders along sixty-eight one fifty for safer white travel. Overall, I've provided the council documentation on how the public trail easement conflicts with the approved town plans. You've heard from Bear Creek petition on how surrounding neighbors don't want this trail access. You've heard legal arguments from Joe and myself via email challenging the legitimacy and viability of easement. And you've heard viable alternatives from my Bear Creek neighbor. I ask you to uphold your code of ethics obligation to respect the law and promote public confidence in the integrity of our government. Closure of this particular easement, for all intents and purposes, in the interest of the community.
Is there time remaining?
One minute.
Anyone else who should speak in favor? Do I want this, or twice? I have a closing period for people who wish to speak in favor. We're now open twenty minutes for people who wish to speak in opposition to this. Yes, ma'am, I beg.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Farrell, and I live at five eight three hundred Millard Road in Oak Ridge. Um, so far, we've heard a lot of comments about how keeping this trail easement may affect one particular neighborhood. I'm going to tell you how voting to close it will impact the whole Oak Ridge community. That is why, as Assistant of Oak Ridge and on behalf of the Oak Ridge Mountain to Sea Trail Committee, I'm here to ask that you vote to keep the public trail easement in the Ashford subdivision open. On October eighth, twenty fifteen, the town of Stokesdale held a public hearing, much like this one tonight, during their monthly meeting. The outcome of that hearing was that Stokesdale has to be taken off the MST route beside unfounded concerns of trespassing crime liability, trash, and cost. Kate Dixon, the executive director of the Friends of the MST at the time, was quoted as saying that in the organization's history, she could never, she could not remember ever having a town asked to be taken off the trail route. Shortly after, Oak Ridge expressed an interest in the trail, and the rest, as they say, is history. In twenty eighteen, the Mountain to Sea Trail Committee was formed and trail building began. The MST now enters northwest Oak Ridge County from Forsyth County at the Cascades Preserve. It travels through the preserve, down through Oak Ridge, and will eventually lead to Summerfield. Since the Oak Ridge Trail effort began in twenty eighteen, approximately six miles of trails have been built in the town. Oak Ridge trails have become a feather in the cap, in our cap, with recognition by local and state organizations for our efforts. Our MST campsites hail lot through hikers, and our citizens committed for their hospitality. The MST's route through Oak Ridge has literally and figuratively put us on the map and is something that we should all be proud of. Of the nearly six miles of trail that I just mentioned, five thousand nine hundred and fifty feet, or one point one three miles, are built on easements granted by developers. Easements are a crucial part of our trail system and provided the needed, provided the land needed to build a seismic network of trails through Oak Ridge. These easements provide the opportunity to connect neighborhoods to other neighborhoods, the town park, and town core. The potential movement of easements would set a dangerous precedent. Allowing landowners to remove existing easements should have detrimental consequences for public trails in Oak Ridge, affecting not only the current trails, but also establishing a worrisome precedent for future requests. This brings us to the easement that runs through the Ashford subdivision. In a letter dated December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, Kevin Rust, attorney for Green Horse LLC, listed a number of practical considerations for why the trail easement through Ashford subdivision should be closed. I'll list those considerations along with the MST committee's response. Number one, the area where the trail easement presently exists runs through a tree preservation zone, and under the town's ordinances, the trees may not be destroyed. The MST committee strives to be true stewards of the environment, and we work to build and maintain trails that do not impact trees, much less destroy them. In fact, we've rerouted trails that might impact trees many times, creating considerable more, more work and man hours that are needed. Two, the topography of the trip area will make construction of the trail in huge challenging as the land is rocky and windy. Our response is that trail easements become easements because they are not necessarily the most desired land for development. Topography of the area is not an issue as it is quite like the trail easement behind the Pemberley development. As it is quite like the trail easement behind the Pemberley development. Three, a creek runs through the trail easement, which will interfere with the use of the trail after a rain. Our response is the MST committee in Oak Ridge has become quite adept at voting bridges, both literally and figuratively. We welcome everyone to hike the Headwaters Trail to see the bridges built on that trail, or to hike the newest section of trail, Pemberley, where a local scout has built a bridge that spans a creek also greatly impacted by big rains. Four, the two neighborhoods that would be the most likely benefactors of the trail, Bear Creek and Ashford, do not want the trail. We are well aware that Bear Creek neighborhood has come out against the trail. We understand and empathize that the trail is new and different, and that it feels like it's being forced upon the homeowners in Bear Creek. An established plan for the trail's construction and development as communicated to the community indicates a thoughtful breach of this project. Privacy concerns are definitely acknowledged, and commitments expressed to collaborate with Bear Creek landowners to find solutions such as skid sinker planting to minimize privacy and keep users on the designated trail. Five, Green Horse has lifeboats, been unable to find a builder, builder willing to build on the lots that have left the trail. All but one of the lots have been in the east and have sold as of today. Six, the two neighborhoods are concerned about increased traffic in the respective neighborhoods, vandalism, and possibly liability for injuries incurred on or near property running along the trail. The MST committee reiterates that there is no evidence of trails from private neighborhoods. As for increased traffic, parking is clearly annotated on trail maps and illegal parking. And illegal parking is strongly discouraged in the trail community. Without parking or trail, or trailheads, we would not anticipate any increase of traffic. Easement liability concerns are mitigated by the North Carolina recreational use statute, chapter thirty-eight A, which shields private landowners from liability as long as they do not charge trail users. Even though we can refute the plans made about the Ashford easement and dispel this information spread about trails, the MST committee strives to be a good neighbor. So, as John Delain mentioned, over the past few months, members of the MST committee have met with residents of the Bear Creek neighborhood in an effort to come up with options for the easement. Through discussions in John Delain's backyard, the neighbor's dining table, and at the gathering on Randy Schmidt's front porch, we've come up with a solution that will move the trail from Ashford down to a wooded area along the creek and into Summerfield. Members of the Summerfield Trails Committee joined in discussions and also are excited about the proposal. However, as John mentioned, this effort will take time. These areas of Summerfield, so the brunt of the work falls on their shoulders. They have indicated that they will start contacting people soon. However, as everyone knows, there's a lot going on in Summerfield at the moment, which may impact the pace of which they work. With this in mind, the MST committee recommends that we put a hold on any trail construction in the Ashford subdivision, not to leverage the trail, but to give us options. We'll continue to check in with Summerfield and help as needed and stay in contact with the Bear Creek Homeowners Association. However, for now, we recommend that the trail easement remain open as we simply cannot close it until a new trail is built. In conclusion, preserving the trail easement of Oak Ridge is an important part of the community's well-being, property values, and the integrity of the public trails. I would like to emphasize, the benefits of trails can be realized physically, mentally, and financially. They are clear value add to our community, and over the past five years have become a selling point for Oak Ridge in our way of life here. I cannot emphasize enough that there is little to no evidence of trails or associated crime or criminal elements. The trails built on Oak Ridge on easements have been and will continue to be built with the utmost respect to the homeowners bordering those easements. We thank you for your consideration and for voting the easement open for now. Thank you.
Anyone else who should speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Hey, good evening. I'm Mike Pimmel. I live at fifty-six oh one Canyon Court in Oak Ridge, and I've been a resident of Oak Ridge since nineteen ninety-four. I'm going to ask you to talk about safety of the trail. I think before I start, I'd like to just talk to you about where I've come from, and what I think about the credentials to talk about safety. I'm an armed veteran with twenty-three years of law enforcement experience. I served as a state criminal consultant magistrate for eighteen years. I have led both cops counts and boy scouts, and I'm a current member of the MST committee. And of course, I'm an avid hiker, and I'm a, and I love the environment. The purpose of this council meeting is to address the issue about the easement. The folks before me have advocated that the town should remove the easement based upon the perception that the easement is intrusive and unsafe. When you think about it, a physical trail does not, is not intrusive. It's the people who walk the trail that are intrusive. So, but, so basically, what they're saying is that they're suggesting that people who walk trails are undesirable. And I'm telling you, that is far, far from the truth. I'm now sitting six years old, and I hike a couple of trails all the time. I've hiked in North Carolina, Virginia, as far west as Mexico. Actually, my wife and I walk the trails in Oak Ridge every day. And I can truthfully say, I have actually never met someone that I didn't enjoy talking with on the trail. From my experience, the people that are on the trail love to exercise, they love to find solitude, they like to explore, and they like to meet fascinating other people. And of course, in Oak Ridge, they love to walk their puppy dogs. As you can see, my description is actually totally, the image I'm giving you is actually totally different than the ones promoted by Bear Creek and Ashford. When I joined the MST community in two thousand and eighteen, I was attracted by the vision of a state trail that spreads from the mountains to the sea with the goal of connecting diverse populations, historical treasures, and rich cultures. Oak Ridge had a vision too, to create an open, connected, and vibrant community, stressing the importance of quality of life. The MST became a very important part of the town's vision. It would become the footpath that introduced visitors to our people, to our historic sites, and to our places of commerce. Our public trail, talking about the MST goes through Oak Ridge, and Austin's called the Headwaters Trail, begins in Cascades. It continues beyond the Cascades to Hall River Road, where a gravel pathway takes over. The gravel pathway leads hybrid along Hall River Road and then down Pepper Road, where it enters the woods, again, following the Hall River Headwaters to Limpel Road. And I'm describing this for a reason. There is a neighborhood that's right in the middle of that called River Gate. If you look at River Gate, the community of River Gate is right off Hall River Road. On the north side of that community, Mountain Sea Trail parallels and butts several properties in their backyards. And then the Mountain Sea Trail traverses across the front of that neighborhood, paralleling Hall River Road, crossing their main, main entrance road over to Pepper Road. So this, this whole neighborhood is nearly surrounded by the Mountain Sea Trail. And we have yet received a complaint from that community. We have yet received a complaint from that community. Perhaps a contributing factor to unwanted vehicles in, and for example, River Gate, is that we have two parking lots. One parking lot is on Goodwill Church Road, and the other parking lot is on Limpel Road. Most of the hikers, particularly coming from out of Oak Ridge, use those parking lots. And how do they do that? Well, right here. They widely, they use trail apps. For example, the Piedmont Discovery App, the Piedmont Discovery is a major app. It covers all the Piedmont area. Says if you would like to hike on the Headwaters Trail, which is the trail that's on Limpel Road over to Pepper Road, then there's a parking lot at eighty-four hundred Limpel Road. If you type in Cascades, it will say, "There is a parking lot at seventy-three fifty-nine Goodwill Church Road." So this app will help people go to parking lots. So the, the chances of people actually parking in someone's neighborhood is very slim. Most people out of, out of, out of Oak Ridge will rely on these. Most people out of, out of, out of Oak Ridge will rely on these apps. And I know that the town of Oak Ridge and the MST Committee are actively investigating parking possibilities to public access given to the trails that are located near Bitterley and Carriage Cove, near Highway one fifty. And I know that we'll, we will continue to investigate possible locations for parking lots. Because I think that once we get that parking lot established, then just like the other parking lots, folks will, will go to those parking lots versus go to neighborhoods. I'm trying to give you in this presentation just my personal experience. I haven't quoted any statistics and chunks of crimes, because I haven't heard anything other than the, the property crimes that occur in the park, in the parking lots. But I haven't heard of any crimes, anything involving people being hurt or injured or threatened involving our public trails. So in conclusion, I recognize that there's always the possibility of bad things happening on public trails. It's unavoidable. However, in my seventy-six years, I fortunately have not experienced any of that. And I believe that the Berry Creek and Ashford reasons for removing the easements, and they're saying their reasons involve intrusiveness and safety are simply basis and do not hold water at all.
Any time left?
Four minutes, thirty-eight seconds.
Anyone else who's to speak in opposition? You've got four minutes. Yes, sir, in the back.
My name is Matthew Brach. My address is six nine zero zero River Gate Court. And I live on the corner of River Gate as the gentleman, I've got a bat, and Hall River Road as he just described. I take care of a mow, but around that trail, that gravel path that he just described, I have the trail butts right up to the back of my property. My kid's swing set is right there in my backyard. And when the trail first came out, I was somewhat opposed to the trail because I said, my thought was parking. People are going to park on my yard and then, um, I like to take care of my yard and have a nice looking yard and that was, that was my main concern. After doing some investigating and finding out that there was going to be a parking lot on Linville Road, and I also know of the Goodwill Church Road parking lot, since the trail has been put in, there's been no one parked on my road, on road, sorry, at River Gate. No trash along the trail, there's been no crime. I see lots of families hiking, people walking their dogs, runners, people getting exercise. And I think the trail's a good thing. As I said, I was opposed at first, but that mind shift quickly changed. I think the trail's good. People get exercise, people can be with their families and spend time outside. So I think, I think the trail's a great thing for Oak Ridge.
Thank you, Peggy. Sounds like we might have a minute or two left. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Joel Deacon, sixty-one oh one Wind Road, Summerfield. Now, it's only a mile from, from Oak Ridge, but I was asked in two thousand and sixteen if I would be the task force leader on behalf of the Mountain Sea Trail for the area of Summerfield and Oak Ridge since there was a desire to pack trails in the area of Oak Ridge since I had trail building experience and certifications. So in two thousand and seventeen, I worked with the county to bring the trail out of Cascades Preserve, which it was preserved, so we had to be very careful with it. Took it right behind River Gate. I helped flag the trail, and then we flagged a trail and through Riverside. I'm not aware of any complaints about the trail. People sometimes state concerns about their houses being close to the trail. This week, I was weeding the trail that were on Riverside, and I'm pretty good at judging distance, and they have a one point two million dollar house that's about half-built, only thirty yards from the trail, without a stick of shrubbery of trees in between the house and the trail. So obviously, some folks feel like that's not much of an issue. May actually be a possibility. We have two hundred and two volunteers for the building of the trail that we will send out whenever we have workdays. Oak Ridge was highlighted at the State Friends of Mountain Sea Trail Convention several weeks ago, and the trail has been designated as a state trail, which is a pretty coveted award through the state parks. I was also an advisor to Summerfield at the beginning, but they decided to go with the paved pathway concept, which has been those big bucks and more effort, and that's outside my dirt path working experience. The question about an eight-foot wide trail, our dirt paths typically are about that wide. And guess what? We can zigzag and zigzag. So unless we have a ten-foot tree in the middle of the trail, we ought to be able to accommodate even an eight-foot wide dirt path. Interesting comment about Stokesville is they mentioned they did not want the trail. I'm actively working with the Boy Scouts through, they're now building a dirt path trail around their town park. So evidently, they had a change of park option.
So I think that's very well said. Trails are very much in desired places, even in your backyard. Thank you. All right, now that opens a period of five minutes for people in favor of the application to rebut. So again, state, state name and address again. I realize you may have spoken earlier, but state name and address again in five minutes is yours.
We've got Patrick Haywood, three five zero eight, two of Shaw, Greensboro, two seven four, Greensboro. We, there were some arguments made on our side, and my arguments were mostly legal arguments, practical arguments. This is not accepted, contrary to statute, which says it had to be, and it's contrary to case law interpreted statute. It's pretty straightforward. The, what you've heard a lot of was, I'm not sure where it came from. I think people walked in, I think, and this is what we'd say, that it was intrusive, it was unsafe, or any number of other things. Nobody said that. Not a single person on our side said that. That was what's called a strong argument in law. It's one that you walked in and thought, you know, you're going to knock that one down with all the facts about other trails and everything. I'm not sure that's true. That was not our argument. Our argument was, it's not legal for the reasons that you've heard, and it's not practical. I understand what the gentleman said, but the trail is this big, that's not what's required. They're not this big. And weaving around trees and stuff in an eight-foot easement, that eight-foot easement goes straight. You don't weave around trees in an eight-foot easement. So that's not practical either, and that terrain is not practical, and it doesn't really go anywhere. So for those reasons, I mean, I'll simply say, no one really addressed any legal arguments. And I didn't expect that, I mean, the lawyers, but what it did here, which was promising for me, if you decide to take it off. Both sides, both sides talked about trying to find a resolution in some different location. So I don't know how you go about that or what you do, but that's why I'm sitting there. I stand out here. So unless you have any questions, I'll say thank you and sit down.
Questions, compliments. Anyone else who's wish to rebut during the five-minute period? Yes, ma'am.
Lindsay Clark, six eight one six, Collie Drive. Um, yes, just to reiterate, I usually should make you guys job easy because they didn't really address any points that we're making. And it's not about anti-trail hearing at all. I think, you know, most everyone has said that they're against the easement, it's very per-trail, trails have their place. And it's not a precedent for closing other trails at all either, because this trail is like no other easement trail throughout Oak Ridge. Every other trail easement is twenty feet wide. To be able to, like they said, weave around trees, accommodate things like that, have, you know, planting buffers were required, that's why every other easement is twenty feet, this is not. So it's not a precedent for closing all the other trails that have those licenses. As well as, you know, I get how I get to the, or all of these hot trails, but you want to compare apples to oranges. River Gate is completely different because, one, is a new neighborhood, two, the conditional zoning required the public trail easement there. So yeah, if you move into a neighborhood that requires that, it is what it is. No other trail easement has the approachment that this one does on existing homes on the incorporation of privacy. Not that I wanted to make the argument, but just to acknowledge everybody what they were saying about, you know, comparing the other examples and how great they are. It's just apples and oranges, totally different. See, it's not just this specific easement that we're asking to close. This one is totally different than all the other ones. It's unwanted, unnecessary, and it's also illegitimate, so.
Any time remaining?
Minute and a half.
There's a minute and a half if anyone else who's speaking in favor or rebut. Seeing none of those, that period, now there's a five-minute period for people that are in opposition, that they would, if they would like to do any rebuttal. With no one speaking, that period of public comment is, is closed. Before we proceed, I feel we probably should address if there are any potential conflict of interest. Does anyone feel they have a conflict of interest that would prevent them from hearing this case? Mr. Thomas, do you feel? Mr. Harden's membership, has any impact?
In this case, no.
Thank you. Okay. So, at this point, council typically goes through a period of discussion, and then we typically have make a motion on the matter. So with that, I'd like to open up the discussion. Mr. Greason? And what we'll do is, well, everyone on council will get an opportunity to speak once. And at that point, we will typically go into a back and forth and, and kind of talk, talk among ourselves between ourselves, so we'll go back and forth a little bit. And at that some point, we'll decide that it's time to make a motion. So I'd like to just at least, at least have an initial round of comments, and then we can discuss a little more detail. Mr. Greason?
My thoughts are Berry Creek's been built since roughly two thousand and nine. There was no easement there. I think it's wrong, but Scotts should get together, and it should be equally as wanted. If one side doesn't want one Berry Creek, which there, you're taking up all their privacy in my mind. You're taking up their front yard, their rear yard, and those four or five houses that are affected. In my opinion, you shouldn't do that. Give me some privacy. Where am I supposed to go? Stay at my house? So I'll be voted to remove it. That's my, where I'm coming from.
Mr. Stone?
Mr. Mayers, is it time to ask questions or just make comments?
I think we could have a full discussion before the intermission. So feel free to ask questions.
Let's start, I'll just run down this list here. Thank everybody for speaking and for bringing your information, which I appreciate it. That's how we make decisions, that's how I make decisions. Two point two point two is mentioned in the land use recommendations in the packet, and it says lower density areas where sidewalks are not practical. I don't know if this question is for Sean or for Bill. Are the sidewalks not practical in this neighborhood, or is it not cost-effective?
Typically, in hardest forty neighborhoods outside of the town core, we don't ask for sidewalks. In fact, the ordinance doesn't require sidewalks as, as part of that development. So really, a trail would, would probably be just about the only option for that type of pedestrian accommodation.
Okay, so you're saying that it's not practical?
Well, and it's also something that our land use plan does not advocate. I believe our land use plan specifically refers to sidewalks in the town core.
Okay. Mr. Haywood? Please come off the microphone. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the microphone. And forgive me, I'm taking notes as I'm trying to listen here, but you had mentioned in your comments, and I wrote, that the easement was rescinded before it was accepted. Is that, can you explain that?
I can. There is a recorded easement on a plaque you have in your materials. I can tell you exactly where if you wish for it. There was a letter from my office where, once we got into a dispute about this, we actually rescinded it entirely. So it's either twelve second time, I can tell you that it's a twelve, thirteen, or fourteen, if I take long enough, I can find, well, it's right here, it's, it's at eleven, my fault. It's the second paragraph of eleven. And the second paragraph says, the purpose of this letter is to discuss the offer and subsequent verification of the offer to grant an eight-foot public trail easement, which is referenced on a portion of the plaque for the reasons discussed below. Do you see that, sir?
Yes.
So, the, the plaque was never accepted. It's never come before this governing body to accept it, which is required under both straightforward North Carolina statutes, which is hard to get around, and subsequent case law, which interpreted it. And so, Mr. Michael Thomas and I, I like him quite a bit, he's easy to work with, he's a darn good lawyer, for sake of, we didn't seem to be getting where we wanted to be, this is the line where we went ahead and rescinded it. And so, even to the state, it's not being accepted. And now it can't, because we, you can do whatever you want to, but we revoked it, which is, I think, the answer to the question.
I think you answered my second question. So what you're saying is that this would have to be accepted, this would have to be a vote of the town council to accept, or a resolution or some act of the town council?
Correct.
And you're saying that wasn't done?
It was not, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thomas, what do you think?
Thank you, Patrick. Your remarks. I responded to the original letter from Barfield, who's a colleague of Mr. Haywood's at Corlins and Rock back last October. I read from that. An offer of an easement in North Carolina alone is insufficient to constitute an acceptance of easement. The municipality must demonstrate its acceptance in honor of the due to the forms. That includes adoption of an ordinance of acceptance. In Oak Ridge, such acceptance is done through the process of administrative approval and recordation under the ordinance. Adopted in the land development provisions of the Oak Ridge Code of Ordinance is codified as section thirty dash six twenty-three D one and providing rights of way easements. The approval and recordation of a plaque constitutes dedication to and acceptance by jurisdiction and the public of the right of way of each public street, alley, or utility or drainage easement shown on such plaque. And again, we have treated trails as coming within public streets or alleys. I haven't heard anybody contradict that interpretation. Indeed, we're here under the We're here under the 168 H D nine-nine statute tonight, because that statute also doesn't mention trails for closing purposes, but it's the closest we have to give the public a way of getting before a board and saying, close this trail. The legislature hadn't provided any other mechanism, and it's a reasonable interpretation. The point is this, the 160D provision that Mr. Haywood cited, as I understand it, which I think is a reasonable instruction of it, is a complication of prior case law, which dates from over decades in North Carolina, in which you had a recurring situation of subdivisioners or more or less a subdivision of some kind, including a public dedication of some type of easement, and it would be recorded, and it would be around for decades sometimes, anyway, long periods of time. And then, there would be use of it. And then there would be a challenge about whether it had ever been accepted by the public or not, either by express action or there is obscriptive use, but we didn't get into that, talking about whether it had been accepted expressly by the local jurisdiction. Case law always were that without an express action by the jurisdiction, there was no acceptance. That was the case law. The 160D provision, which went on the books four, five years ago, when 160D went on the books as a real organization law or planning statute, reflects that rule. Well, Oak Ridge has long dealt with that by providing in the development ordinance itself that, as I wrote to you, dedication to and acceptance by the jurisdiction happens upon approval and recordation. That is an ordinance, that's an express act. It is preemptive, it is in advance of the action, so that an owner or developer knows in advance it's going to happen. When the owner and developer goes through the process and the platte is reported, that's when acceptance happens. That's Oak Ridge's choice under its powers, under now 160D, article nineteen, now 160D, to regulate zoning and regulate subdivisions for such greenest area. And it has agreed to, it has acted to do this in this manner in advance, so to speak. I would illustrate by contrast in Greensboro. The city of Greensboro has codified the old case law that expressly provides in its development ordinance that solely the recordation alone of a dedication of an easement without an action by the Greensboro City Council is not an acceptance. Greensboro has codified the rule that came out of the case law, and made it clear that just because you put something on the record until the city council agrees, it's only a dedication, and as Mr. Haywood indicated, it's subject to revocation before it's accepted. His position is, this trail easement was not accepted, therefore to be voted by the owner. And I'm advising the board that, in fact, it was accepted upon recordation, and there's no basis, no legal basis for the revocation that Mr. Haywood has referred to, so that it is still, in effect, the town still has the trail easement dedication, it's accepted, still has the easement. Our ordinance provides, by the way, that acceptance doesn't mean maintenance responsibility. It's either by moving out, building on it, maintaining, or passing a formal declaration that it's going to be so, and then it's accepted, which is required to obligate the town of Oak Ridge to actually maintain such a dedicated easement. That's a side point, but I just want to point that out. But again, our ordinance is explicit and expressed in saying acceptance happens upon recordation. Again, that's how Oak Ridge has chosen to do it, in an ordinance duly enacted by this So the, again, I'm advising the council that the easement is valid and accepted.
Thank you, sir. Hey, Stephanie, can I ask a question of you, please? Thank you for coming and nodding off. Hey, you were speaking on behalf of the Mountains to Sea Trail, and your comment was that the Mountains to Sea Trails, let me see how it, it was good that between the different parties that discussions on porches and yards came up with an alternative, but it would take time, and the pace of executing any type of an alternative based on a lot of other factors would take time. Then you said that MST feels that we should hold.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a recommendation on how MST would like to see that done, or how long?
We want to go back to the council on how long, what has John referred to as a moratorium on the trail. We will give regular check-ins on the status of the new trail or a new trail, but we're saying at least a year, start with a year, and then go from there.
Okay, and the comment, well, okay. All right, thank you.
I'll say it again.
Look at, look at, once, a brain's glitch, can we move it up?
Well, wait, after everyone's had a chance, everyone's going to have a chance. We agree, we agree.
Yeah.
I can't find my word either. You'll have a chance as you try to get it. Mr. Harden?
First of all, I was surprised that my passion with the question, my ability to make judgments in this case, just for the record, overall donations that I make, this is about a half percent. Since I came in specific, specific to philanthropy, directed to the town of Oak Ridge, it's about one percent, one and a half percent.
Excuse me, Councilman Harden, would you pull your microphone down?
Thanks for these books and all that. So I was surprised by that, but I think you can make good judgments anyway. I also, since I retired and am back to our family farm, not only have I supported the Mountains to the Sea Trail in a minimal way, I've also supported the strength and honor fund, which you saw given. I've also made donations recently to make a glade, and I've made donations to preservation of Ridge, and I've made substantial donations on behalf of our families to the Veterans Honor Room. So I'm surprised that my philanthropy and the time I spent on committees and things is called into question. So just for that, I've heard two approaches, and I've read many of these documents, not this book, even kind of late here, but I read emails, I read letters shared to Mr. Thomas and Adamus and Mr. Healy, and other people. I've heard two approaches, and as I understand from Mr. Thomas, to us, that we have an easement that is ours, it's an asset to this town. And I think, if you go back to when I was elected, and that first time I said, I would represent and look forward toward keeping the interest of all the citizens of Oak Ridge and not the specific few. I've heard both approaches. I appreciate the concept of moratorium. I thought ten years was way too late. I will be in my eighties, and then if I'm still on the planet, so I don't feel it right about committing this town to a moratorium that extends beyond the term of this council. I liked what I heard from Saturday from the Mountains to Sea Trail, to protect the easement, but to continue to work forward, and to at least, whether you call it a moratorium or just, I don't know what the term would be, but to at least stop action until we continue to work together between Bear Creek and the Mountains to Sea Trail to find that solution. And that's the position that I would support. Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who spoke, who wrote, and I'm looking forward to continuing this discussion tonight. I'm especially grateful for the many hours that the MST committee and some of the neighbors in the American neighborhood have spent discussing possibilities related to the trail easement. Before I go any further, I want to clarify that the land use plan 2.2.2 isn't about the Mountains to Sea Trail, it's about local trail connections. And regardless of whether a section of the MST is installed in this part of town near Ashford, near going to Bandera, going to Summerfield, or not, this local, this easement constitutes a very valuable local trail connection that connects two neighborhoods certainly, but my understanding is that with a tiny bit of extra work, it would connect to the, is this correct, Mr. Bruce, that it would connect to the Kimberley and other trails? Yes. And as Mr. Kimmel pointed out, the town is already investigating a trailhead parking area for those trails, which would connect very easily to this trail. So I value this easement not only for its potential, which is, I think, a ways out there, as many people have said, to be part of the MST trail, but also, and maybe even more importantly, for its value to the local community connecting neighborhoods, which is what the land use policy is about. So, in my opinion, the central issue here is something we hear in a lot of rezoning cases. It's the "not in my backyard" easement, argument. I've heard this from, I've heard from many in Bear Creek saying, "I like trails, I go on trails, we support trails, we like what our town does to increase walkability and neighborhood connections, but not here, not in our backyard." So what I want to point out is, this is actually not in their backyard, it's not on their property. It's in the adjoining subdivision, which has no neighbors in it who are against it because the lots, although the lots have been sold, they haven't been built and purchased by individuals to mine. Anyway, I haven't heard anyone from that neighborhood objecting to it, other than the developer who offered the easement. And again, it's been suggested in some of the letters that, and even Mr. Haywood didn't quite address it, but the suggestion of coercion, there was no coercion on our side, and this is a completely legal and appropriate easement. The problem is, so none of us controls what happens in our neighbors' yards, unless it's against the law, against the zoning. But I see that neighbors are nonetheless concerned about this. I just want to point out that easements, I did some research on this beyond Oak Ridge, because I like to look at things in context. Easements are a normal, legal tool that our town and many, many towns have used repeatedly to develop trails. Doesn't matter the size, a trail, as Mr. Deaton pointed out, just needs to accommodate two feet. According to the Director of Government Affairs at the North Carolina League of Municipalities, what Oak Ridge does in terms of seeking trail easements, and the way we accept them, the way we do it, and they're doing some more research for us, is completely normal. It's not trail raising, she said. I think that was supposed to be a joke. She also mentioned that there's been a huge increase in state funding for trails over the last six to seven years. What does this mean? This means that people want trails. And in fact, the legislature, six to seven years ago, said, "Oh, we don't want to support trails." Now they're supporting trails, both with their discretionary funding and through a whole series of grants. I heard about several of them at a recent conference, and we've gotten a couple of those types of grants. So, the reason the legislature, my understanding is, has changed its tune is because all of the new industry that's coming to North Carolina, those people, their employees, love trails. They want local trail access, they want the recreation, they want the connections. It's also pretty clear from my research that trails increase property values, which I know you didn't talk about tonight, but this is why now North Carolina has been rebranded as the Great Trail State. We are a part of that, and I'm proud of that. What folks across the state know is that trails and trail easements are an asset both to the communities they're in, to the individual developments like Ashford, and to homeowners. And of course, there's, as Mr. Kimmel noted, they're very safe. So what about the process? I think Mr. Thomas has been clear. I trust Mr. Thomas, I trust our staff. When they tell us, tell me that they did things the right way, I believe them. We did follow our ordinances, and I know that ordinances have been sort of cherry-picked to say, "Oh, we didn't follow this one, we didn't follow that one." Our attorneys reviewed it multiple times, every single objection, and I've offered to me, with Ms. Clark, Ms. Clark and others in Bear Creek, to go over with staff some of the objections, I haven't been taken up on it. Shifting our view a bit, why does Oak Ridge care about easements? Why do we have these ordinances in the first place? Well, there's the statewide trend, but on a local level, it's about connectivity, and it's about our land use plan, it's about our strategic plan, and they're all clear. The trails are a part of making our community more walkable, more connected, and making open spaces accessible to residents. These are all worthy goals and ones that I've supported ever since I've been on town council. So, what this comes down to for me is, I understand that people are unhappy, and that doesn't make me happy, but I thought it was very interesting that the gentleman from Rivergate talked about his transition from being worried to being very comfortable with the trails. I think that can happen here as well. And my role on this council and my responsibility is to support what's best for Oak Ridge and its future. In order for our town to thrive, all of this has to be, trails, walkability, and preserving the beauty of our open space has to be part of that future. Thank you.
Thank you. Going last, a lot of my questions have been answered, specifically the legal questions I would have asked Mr. Thomas. He's addressed the fact that he feels that the easement was given legally, and that we have legal, legal ownership of that easement. So what I'll spend a little more time with, and probably overlap some of the things Ms. Snyder talked about. Since I moved here in 2000, the town of Oak Ridge has focused on walkability and trails. I was on the planning zoning board for a number of years, and frequently, we would ask for easements with a potential down road, that we'd be able to put trails on them. We have, we have some dedications that probably will never connect to anything. If you look at the maps all throughout the town, and you look at a lot of developments, there's little bits and pieces of dedication that probably will never connect, but we took them because of the potential for connection. And recently, some of those dedications fell into place. We have the Cascades, we have the path coming down Alver, down Pepper, down to Riverside. That is a development that... That is a development that we asked for an easement on. Yes, it was an easement that was there to begin with, but I can pretty much, based on what I've heard, a lot of homeowners didn't know it was there when they bought the house. They found out later it was there. Okay? But if you walk that trail, as Joel mentioned, there are houses that butt right up against that trail. And we will work with those homeowners if they were to come to us and say, "Look, could you put some screening up?" We would definitely work with them. So that's definitely there on the table, that we would work with them to put some things. I have walked that easement. Randy Schmidt took me on a very detailed tour of that. And there is room. He identified all the trees that we'd have to save and how we'd get around those trees. So he talked about how we would get around those trees, that as far as I can remember, there was no trees he said we had to take out. Would we be able to walk around them, move around them? That, would we love a 20-yard, 20-foot thing? Of course we would. We would love lots of things, but we have an easement. I focus more on the fact that there's a lot of MST mentioned. Well, I see that as, as mentioned, this is local connectivity also. As I said, the town's been working very hard for local connectivity. It may seem a stretch, but all the, all the developments on Bunch Road, with a little bit of work, could easily walk down and use this trail. But also the developments of that Bear Creek connection could use the walk to Bunch Road because we're trying to get a path through to 68 so that you'd be able to enter the developments on Bunch Road, or walk through them, walk up, maybe potentially walk up across Fogelman, come out of Fogelman, come up on the sidewalk that's, that's going to be put there by NCDOT. And then once you do that, you're in the park. And then we're just trying to get that part connected to the Headwater Trail. So if we're able to connect these dots, you could walk maybe 10 miles with minimal walking on roads. The intent is not to be on the roads. We want to get off the roads, but we understand that sometimes you're going to have to be on the road. So maybe on Bunch Road, we do for a little gravel path like we did on Pepper to get that there. So like I said, I look at this, what house is going to benefit the entire town? And that's why, you know, I'm very much in favor of trying to preserve this easement. As far as a 10-year moratorium, I don't believe legally we would be able to enter into any kind of that thing because a future town council can do whatever they please. So the best we can do is to say, "Look, we're going to commit to you in the next 18 months that we will wait and see. We'll do check-ins, things like that." But the reality is, is there's a de facto moratorium on this easement as it is because, as many people have pointed out, there's a bridge that needs to be built. And that bridge is going to take time and money, and we have to find out where that money comes from. Maybe it could be a glorious Boy Scout project, but I doubt it because we have to find out how big it's going to be. But the Trail Committee has taken on bigger, pretty big projects, so it may be something that can manage. But again, by de facto, there's a moratorium on developing that trail just because of the reality of funding and that. So let me see, there's a lot to talk about here. And I do want to point out that when we have Trail Days, people come from all over the state to help us, which highlights how much the residents all across North Carolina value trails. Trails do improve property values. Trails do improve sense of community. The fact that you can walk from one neighborhood to another neighborhood means that your communities are connected. You know, ideally, we want our communities to be walkable. The children of those neighborhoods already play in the woods. So by default, by de facto, they're taking care, they're taking advantage of an easement that does not exist. So right now, they are able to play in those woods through the charity of the landowner saying, probably not saying anything, but a future landowner could say, "Hey, you can't cross my property anymore. You can't go play in the woods." By having this easement, this neighborhood will still be able to take advantage of those, those trails and those woods without having to worry about a future landowner saying, "Hey, you can't cross my property anymore." So that's where I am right now. I'll have other comments there. Would it, oh, before we go any further, would it be appropriate to maybe take a short break? You okay? You're okay? All right, all right. Okay. All right. Entertainer, additional comments, and then I think we might be able to, as much comments as you like. I think we're getting probably close to the potential to have a motion. But Mr. Stone, I think you had some comments to serve up after.
So I intentionally ask questions to gather information before I make, before I make statements here, but with all due respect to the comments made, I'm really not concerned about what other people in the great state of North Carolina think about trails in Oak Ridge. You know, I'm concerned about what the residents of Oak Ridge think about trails in Oak Ridge. The direct property owners and residents of Bear Creek, like Roddell pointed out, there's a detrimental location to the easement. It's poorly thought out. The placement is, it creates issues with their privacy in their own backyards. I hear comments that we could possibly do some sort of screening or barriers, whatever the case may be, but nobody's brought out that we will do this, therefore, if we pass this, then they're just out. So if we really thought that was going to be something we were going to do, we should have laid that out ahead of time. And it might have swayed the impatience of some people. But let's be clear. This is an eight-foot wide by 90-foot long strip of land. It's not part of the MST. It's a local easement. The MST doesn't go where this easement is at. Can it be connected to it? Yeah, it can if you're ready to spend the money on engineering a bridge that will cross a ditch, ravine, topographical issue. I've logged it. It's not a Boy Scout project. We don't have a budget for that. We don't even know how much it would cost. It's been suggested we can get state grants. We don't have state grants. So a de facto moratorium, so. But again, if it's a de facto moratorium, then, you know, let's be the elected leaders that we are supposed to be and take de facto and make it a legitimate. I saw all the documents. Good Lord, all the documents, you know, from between the attorneys and everything. And a lot of it were included in this right here, and all the emails and everything. Even if there's enough angst and there's enough muscle that likely this is going to continue to be litigated, that's going to cost the town money for an eight-foot by 90-foot strip of land. Why would we want to continue to litigate? Even if we win, we're going to be spending money on that when, as Mounts to Sea Trail folks have talked about and the neighborhood people have talked about, that there are opportunities for alternatives. I think that we should be listening to our volunteers that we say that we trust, and we should be listening to our citizens. As Jim pointed out, there are trails in other places, but the homes were there in River Gate and others. The easements were there before the homes. So the people that were buying into it knew that there was an easement there. In this case, the homes were there in Bear Creek, and the Ashford property was proposed for development, and the easement went in without talking to Bear Creek. I think that we missed an opportunity there. I don't know who said it, but the easement is on somebody else's property. Yes, it is. But it butts existing homes, and that's the issue. If the easement was there and then both developments were built, we wouldn't be sitting and talking about this. Unfortunately, this process has put a negative spotlight on the Mounts to Sea Trail, unfairly, by the way. They do great work. It's not the committee's fault. But it is a lack of on trails because now we have this issue before us where we have enough people that are interested in this and are wondering how we're going to handle the concerns of citizens that we look somewhat hand-handed in this thing. If we're playing a long game, then we need to be thinking about what's to benefit. There, our committee, our Trail Committee PR takes a hit when there's problems and the town's unwilling to make some common sense changes. And I don't think that, that we're losing anything in the easement that is more valuable than what we're gaming with the citizens. Based on the conversations that I've had with staff, MST members, residents, if we continue to force the issue, we're going to jeopardize the opportunity for major connectivity opportunity with Summerfield, Bandera Farms, and that. Again, this is not part of the MST. So knowing this, why would we not see the opportunity and seize upon the opportunity to work in a cooperative process with so many volunteers and residents that have reached out to us? This ain't the hill I'm on. We might win the battle, and I believe in our legal staff. We might win the battle. We're going to lose this war.
Just, I'd like to correct the record. When Mr. Bruce and I met with Mr. Delain and Ms. Clark at least a year ago, we offered them, and I'm sure the MST has talked about this, we have done in the past and we have offered repeatedly, including on that occasion where I was present, we have offered to pay for landscaping and possibly fencing. Fencing, we haven't done before, but landscaping, we have done in a couple of cases. In one case, we offered it, they said they wanted it, and then they said, "You know what? It's fine." And again, it was another family with the swing set right on the Headwaters Trail. So that offer has been made. It remains on the table. If this trail, if and when this trail is ever developed, that offer stands for anyone whose property abuts the trail, then we would pay for landscaping. And I'm sure there are budget considerations, and that's why fences sometimes don't work. But I know that Mr. Delain's property has the most exposure to the trail. So that remains on the table. The other thing I wanted to say is that the MST, in terms of taking the recommendations of our committee, my understanding is that the MST committee does support keeping this trail in place, partly because there are possible other paths for the MST. But we might eventually need that one, but I'm sure they support local connectivity as well.
One final comment before I go, I'm going to ask for a motion. We're starting to get to the point where we're starting infill. We're at the point where we're not having developments that are just big open pieces of land and nothing abutting them. So I'm worried that if we start saying that if you're an existing development, we're not going to ask for an easement, or we're not going to encourage. If you're next to an existing development, we're not going to ask for an easement. So I'm worried that, that will have the opposite effect, that we'll, it'll make it harder for us to get easements because people just say, "Well, we don't need to give it to you because, we don't want to give it to you because, you know, we know that all we have to do is make a little bit of noise and we won't get the easement." In my research, researching the issues of crime which have been raised in the past, there are many examples of people just like from the River Gate neighborhood where they are initially against the trails. One example that I can give you, I can pull it up, get it to me, I don't have it in here now, but a gentleman was adamantly against trails. He even put up a fence of his own. And for a couple of years, he took the fence down and he put some chairs down there next to the trail so that he could interact with the people on the trail. So that, that is where, like I said, I'm just worried that, that with our infilling, we're going to have this situation again and again and again. And I'm just worried that. If there's no further initial comments, I'd like to ask for a motion either approving or denying this request.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we close the public trail easement in the Ashford subdivision based on the information that we received.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? You made the motion, Mr. Stone, so any discussion, George can start with.
Yeah. Again, my issue's not on the niceties, which I appreciate, of people being able to meet people on the trails and everything. This is more of a practical matter, and it's more of a mechanical for me. The complexities of the trail, the width of it, the usefulness of it, and the aims that's been involved in it, I just think that this is the right thing to do for the citizens of Oak Ridge, irregardless of outside influences.
Mr. Greaser?
No, it's a privacy deal with me. I don't mind Mountain Sea Trails, trails. When you come up and put an easement 30 foot from the side of a house, he's already got, he's losing his front with the street out there to go to your front yard. People come out there, so you want to go to your backyard. You lose your privacy. We can't take people's privacy from everywhere and leave them in their house, so this one, I want to, I'm voting to remove it. And, you know, if it would have been there in the first place before the development's built, then so it would have stayed, but I'm voting to remove this one.
Mr. Arden?
I made my previous comments. I understand what Mr. Stone, Mr. Greaser are coming from, but again, this is an asset of the town, and I'm understanding what's to the benefit of all citizens of Oak Ridge, not just a specific few. So I will guess in this case, not before this motion.
Ms. Snyder?
Oh, I think you made a great point about the infilling of developments and assets. This would set a troublesome precedent if we allow this easement to be closed. I think we've asked from the beginning that the neighbors in, in the Bear Creek neighborhood work with us and talk with us and go visit other trails, and we didn't get a lot of traction on that. But I am glad they sat down with the MST Trail Committee members. I do think their privacy will be preserved through appropriate landscaping, and I can support this motion.
I'm trying not to repeat myself. And I realize this, to some, comes across as a little insulting, but all our amenities are in someone's backyard. All our amenities. This town, the new town park is in someone's backyard. And that new town park wasn't there when they bought their house. So this new park is being put next to them after they were there for many, many years. I don't know if John Garrett's here tonight, but his, his property pretty much butts up against the town park. And he was there many, 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 many years before that town park. So again, I have concerns that we're now getting to the point where we're going to infill, so this issue's going to come up over and over and over again. So I, I just, I'm worried that... So I, I, I just, I'm worried that, you know, we're, 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 we're going to lose, lose things. So again, I'm not, I'm in favor of the current motion. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Stone?
Mr. Mayor, so this is the easy part about being a town councilman, you have to be able to count from three, uh, and I can do that. What we heard is that the Mountain Seac trail, the neighbors, and it sounded like the majority of the town council would still entertain a motion for suspending, delaying, and I, I agree with Jim. Um, I, I don't like the term moratorium, but stop action on the town, or on, on the, uh, the easement for, to your point, uh, not encumbering the future town council for eighteen months. And we can, we can do something, revisit, or whatever the case may be at that point, with the understanding that to the de facto moratorium, that we don't have the funding for the bridge, is, would that, I'm trying to find a, a middle ground for all of us in a cooperation thing. Would that be a more palatable process to go through so that we can give some direction to M S T, to the staff, to, uh, the property owners?
Well, they, you know, I think basically we, there's two things. We need, we need to decide on whether or not the application is approved or denied. Then separately, we can definitely direct staff to don't do anything for eighteen months, which would be basically, or whatever, however we want to phrase it, but basically say, look, take a pause, check in with people. You know, right now, I think the committee had recommended that we do basically one, one-year check-ins, that we basically don't do anything, check in after a year, decide what, what we should do and go forward like that. I don't think it'd have a problem with setting the initial, if, if we want to take a breath for eighteen months, but that, I think that is a separate motion that would not be involved with this one. Either we need to address the accepting or denying the request on hand. That separately, we can have a discussion about what we would feel would be appropriate to maybe give at one time for, if the council's supportive of that, to have everyone take breath and we can discuss that separately. I think that's what we need to do. So we need to discharge this motion. We can entertain other action that would be separate.
That's correct. Yeah, Afton is entitled to vote on its application, so that would be the first thing.
And then what you're doing about separately would be a separate discussion that I would be very happy to entertain. All right, so is there further discussion on the motion on the table? If not, all those are fair for the motion to, to accept the, uh, request to remove the easement. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You say aye, yes, so the motion fails. Do we need to go through the process of having a motion to deny it? Or is this motion, or is this sufficient?
The application failed two or three.
So we don't have to do anything further to address this?
That's correct.
Could you turn your microphone on?
I'm sorry, that's correct. The application fails for lack of a jury. Um, now would be a perfect time to discuss a self-imposed delay in development.
As I said, the committee, the committee's asked for a, a one-year pause. I, me personally, I don't, because of the de facto financial issues and things like that, but I'm open to alternative points of view. So whoever would like to start discussing that. Mr. Arden?
I'm just, every eighteen months has been drawn out. I'm not sure math, math, that would, that would fall into this council, you know, but I think mathematically, no, seventeen months.
Seventeen, it's a little over, not, not quite eighteen months. At least if you're shy of eighteen months. I understand that.
Maybe, you know, so I would say something like sixteen months, not fifteen.
Not a reason. Hey, I think you missed it. Your council will be starting.
Well, no, I just, I would prefer a year. I think that we know that a year is reasonable. That's what the committee suggested. I, I just though want to make sure that, we're just saying we're taking a pause. We could continue planning, uh, exploring feasibility, for instance, of funding. There are lots of sources for trail grants, uh, that we could explore. Uh, we could explore the, how we would construct a bridge, that sort of thing. It would remain an easement of the towns, but we, I'm happy to say that we won't construct the trail for the next twelve months.
And I think also during that period of time, this is more opportunity for the trail committee to work with the property owners. Now, uh, you, there are three new property owners, uh, that we can potentially talk with. I think there's only one lot left that's not been sold. But there's three new property owners we can talk to, that they may be open to some modifications of easement, uh, so that they could be able to say, hey, I'll, I'll be okay with moving it here, I'll bring this up. So I think there's definitely, uh, by giving this one-year, um, period, uh, which I think works out cleaner right now because of the math, um, uh, and then future councils can continue adding to that, uh, by saying, hey, we'll take another year pause or, like I said, I think we can't encumber a future council beyond, beyond that, because a future council can't, um, change their mind on anything, pretty much. So, Mr. Thomas, if you have something to say?
No, uh, second this council, I mean, the, if you adopt a formal motion to instruct staff a certain way, then, uh, then that's the rule until you decide otherwise. I'm sure your authority controls it all the time, but if, if you adopt this, it both gives you and staff and the other stakeholders, like private owners, trail committee, et cetera, a structure as to what we're doing. Give this council a chance to hear back on ideas, as Mr. Schneider was referring to Mr. Stone.
Uh, any other initial comments, otherwise, if there's a motion we'd like to make?
Well, new council will take effect January first of twenty twenty-six. That's November seventh.
Well, I guess it's December the fourth.
Right.
So what time do you go late until then?
Yep.
Wow, this is, how many, how many months is that?
Eighteen.
Is it eighteen?
Yes.
Exactly eighteen. I'm not going to quit. So.
I'm sure that by one month, we'll be able to.
I, I would take the trail committee's recommendation of a year. I think that's more than funding, but I'll concede council, the rest is council rules.
So is there a motion for me?
Yeah, so.
About to go November sixth.
So I'd like to make a motion. Let me stop. Mr. Thomas, is moratorium an acceptable term or?
I, I think, uh, you're right. Moratorium is an instant plan, it's typically opposed by legislature.
I'm not talking about.
I, yeah, uh, or just to instruct staff to, uh, refrain from, how do you want to phrase it? It's a refraining from any type of development for X period, and you can add any instruction as to what that is for, if you want to. Otherwise, it's just a, like you said, a stop order type situation, to do nothing, a do-nothing order. But I'm sure staff prefer to, uh, the town manager, but instruction is good as to what you want staff to do during that period.
Can you? Help me out, council, on this one. So I'd like to make a motion that we, that we refrain from development of the Ashford easement for a period of seventeen months with a check-in at twelve months and at seventeen months to the town council. Does that, Mr. Thomas, does that sufficiently, the refrain from development and check-ins, does that sufficiently cover? Mr. Bruce, the party of the town?
Yes, I, I understand what you're, refrain from development and construction.
Okay, there's motion.
Activity.
Access, activity. Motion demand is your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? And as we said, it does not mean that people can't talk. It does not mean people can't, um, engage with each other and try to resolve these issues. Uh, and like I said, the check-in, uh, and actually, there's nothing to stop it from having check-ins earlier. So if you come up with a solution, uh, or a compromise or something after six months, then just come back. Like I said, if, if you can negotiate with the new property owners, they come back with a, um, adjustment, you can come back to us. So we're just saying we want some formally at twelve and seventeen months. So any other comments?
I, I would like one point of clarification from Mr. Stone. You mentioned the word access. Um, you, you are, are you intending that, say, for instance, staff or members of Mountain Seac trail committee would not have access to the easement to evaluate it?
Uh, no. My, when I say access, I'm speaking more of public access for use. I understand that if, and we hope that M S T and the neighbors and the property owners would get together and they would probably be on that easement, but from a accessibility, public easement use, that's, that's my concern.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those who are fair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Uh, I think it'd be appropriate to take maybe a five, ten, five minutes. Let's take a.
We're all nine.
Let's take a five-minute, uh, break, uh, and then we'll read, we'll read the next five minutes. We reconvened. Our next, uh, public hearing is on the budget. Uh. Next, the all center? I'm sorry. Uh, the next public hearing is on the budget. We can follow the same format. Uh, we'll have the budget introduced by the town manager, and then we'll have twenty minutes, twenty minutes, five minutes, and five minutes.
What I should have done during that five-minute break was prepare the budget document.
That's okay.
Bear with me for just one minute.
Pretty tight, you're all right.
It all tomorrow.
And also, you'll notice that I've, I've reached that critical point where these help me off a lot. I'm reading this stuff for points. Um, if you'll bear with me, I'll, at this point, briefly read the budget message as part of, uh, introduction of the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, um, as I did at the last meeting with Representative Bruce. It's my pleasure to present the proposed Town of Oak Ridge fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. It's been prepared with considerable input and oversight from the finance committee as per usual process and, uh, finance officer and the team at Andrews and Arrow, as well as input from various committees and town citizens. After three meetings with the finance committee, including a favorable recommendation, I presented this report to the council and the citizens in the form of a recommended budget. Uh, the proposed budget reflects the town's ongoing commitment to providing services and amenities that are demanded by an active and growing population in a fiscally responsible manner. Over the last quarter century, the town has experienced steady, modest revenue growth, which is a trend projected to continue in the upcoming budget year. Several large capital projects are wrapping up, including the new Heritage Farm Park, while several other projects have been funded and are underway, including the farmhouse community center and the Veterans Auto Garden. We are proposing additional park staff in the next budget year to handle these additional maintenance and administrative responsibilities. Development of the Town of Oak Ridge water system will continue in the next fiscal year, including the anticipated construction of a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-gallon elevated water storage tank and a three-point-two-mile water line to connect the water tank to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County utility condition line and the county line. Uh, both of these projects will be budgeted in separate capital project ordinances and will be fully funded by federal, state, and county grants. And there is an illustrative table in the document, um, that anticipates, uh, revenues and expenses for those capital project ordinances. Several smaller capital projects are also budgeted in the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, implementation of the town park entrance master plan, which was originally budgeted in the current fiscal year, uh, will improve the appearance and functionality of the grounds surrounding the farmhouse community center. surrounding the Farmhouse Community Center. Construction of the second phase of the Veterans Honor Room will complete the full vision of the Special Events Committee and will be augmented by additional donations. Funding for trails and design and engineering for new sidewalks is also included in the budget. Other funded organizations include Oak Ridge Youth Association, and events include the Music in the Parks Series and popular annual events such as Rich Fest, Light of the Night, Heritage Day, and others. The budgets support staff as they continue to provide exceptional service and guidance to the town's 13 standing boards and committees, as well as other project-specific working groups, consultants, and contractors. Staff continues to maintain exceptional park facilities, provides outstanding citizen service, and manages the increasingly demanding day-to-day responsibilities of the borough and town. On the revenue side, through steady and well-planned growth, the town anticipates a 4.5% increase in revenues, which includes property and sales tax collections, interest earnings, ABC revenue, and other formula-based state distributions. Grant revenue over $8 million will be allocated into separate capital project ordinances to fund water infrastructure. Revenue increases are offset by a 9.5% increase in operating expenses, primarily attributable to personnel and operations for new park facilities, but also increasing administrative responsibilities for staff and contracted consultants. As usual, all of our expenses have been researched and vetted by our Finance Committee. All income has been conservatively estimated, after considering our historic financial data and the best information that we can gather from state and county sources. All requests for expenditures were heard, debated, and evaluated by the Finance Committee before being included in the budget. Most importantly, the budget proposes no change to the property tax rate of eight cents, which was adopted in 2017, even with a number of major capital investments, including major investments in water infrastructure and also growing administrative responsibilities. The budget anticipates a fund balance in excess of $2 million at the end of the next fiscal year. This year's proposed budget therefore maintains the current tax rate, funds these initiatives, and also maintains adequate reserves. In the budget message that's been provided to the council and a copy in the back, several copies in the back for citizens, there is information on current initiatives, future initiatives, and budget details in the spreadsheet ordinance.
Okay. We will open the public comment section, uh, public hearing section. If you wish to speak in favor of the budget, you have 20 minutes. Just raise your hand, be recognized, come up, state your name and address, and the floor is yours.
John Jenkins, 67 International Partner. I'm part of the Finance Committee, and I'm happy to report that we went through a line item budget review, as we always do every year, comparing this year to previous years. And I think it's a fair budget. We did discuss the reduction, potential reduction of the tax rate. And the consensus, in my opinion, the consensus of the Finance Committee was that there was very little in terms of benefit to reducing, couldn't reduce the property tax rate to a significant degree and still maintain the projects that you want to do and maintain the budget at the same level. Any reduction would have profound effect on the revenues of the town with a minimal effect on the citizens of the town. So the Finance Committee made the recommendation that we keep the budget at the same level that it has been for several years going forward, just to fund the projects that have been approved by the council. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the budget? Yes, sir. Did I see a hand up? Yes, Patty. Sorry, I didn't see your hand behind Sean's.
Patty Don'tchast, 7320 Hickman Drive. I support the proposed budget. I attended some preliminary planning meetings, and I feel that the Finance Committee and the council has taken a conservative plan and going forth in this budget. So I support it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Stuart Mees, 1810 Lobford Drive, and Chair of the Finance Committee. I want to delve into my support for the budget and just pause for a minute, talk about the big picture of what's happened here in the last 25 years. And I think this 2024 budget continues the successful journey we're going through in this town. And I think it also speaks to previous council members and councils in general, staff, former staff, being stewards of the resources that have been entrusted to them and making this the most desired place to live and try. And that's just not my opinion. There's other numerical data and evidence to support that. One of those, I would like to say that in the three-year period from 2021 to 2024, the median average, or excuse me, the median selling price of a home in Oak Ridge has increased 47%. So there is some dividends of having a very well-managed town that we have. And may also add, as what was brought up earlier, this has been done with no increase since 2017. It was pause for a minute to think about what's happened since 2017. The worst pandemic that we've ever seen, the highest inflationary period that we've seen as a town, population growth that's been steady, but yet our revenue continues to grow, especially through some, I think, creative and alternative revenue streams that our leaders have done during that time. At the same time, we've invested in the amenities that makes this town so fantastic. So I think this year's budget continues on that momentum because we're investing in probably three most significant things that we can. First of all, our people, being our staff, is putting this together. The crown jewel of the town being our park. And then the infrastructure, as we're looking at increasing water to the commercial core. So I think that this budget continues the course that has been created over the previous 25 years. And I hope our opportunistic mindset will continue to pay dividends in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the budget? And if I see no one else who wishes to speak in favor, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the budget? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chuck. So I live at 8505 here in Long Island. Good luck, Richard. I'm opposed to the budget. As Mr. Mees said, the last speaker, maybe I wasn't listening to Mr. Stuart or Mr. Mees, so I'm not sure. We are continuing our momentum. We're continuing on momentum, momentum of big government, of taxes being. So last town council had the opportunity to adjust the tax rate with the average appraisal. Like, like the last speaker said, new homes are costing 47% more. The appraisals have gone up 22% on property, property appraisals. So the last town council, while maintaining the same tax rate of .08, essentially gave , handed the taxpayers of Oak Ridge a 22% tax increase. Now, so did the county. So you're not, you know, you're not out there by yourself. The county did the same thing. So I would like to thank the Finance Committee for their hard work and their vetting and the consideration and review and everything. And I do believe that they have given us a conservative, as well as the town staff, they've been giving us a conservative budget. But it's conservative because of the excessively high tax rate and not because of prudent spending. It was indicated that the initiatives that the town council wanted were striving, were the reasons why they couldn't reduce the budget. We've got a 4.5% increase to revenues projected with a 9.5% increase in, in spending for the park. And when you look at the park section of the budget, last year was 677,000 for the cultural and recreational expenses. This year it's 818,000. Okay? That represents, I don't remember what does that figure, is 134,000 dollar increase with 30% increase just in, in the park. Now, I do realize that there is a significant amount of land, but it requires a little, a little maintenance. There's not a whole lot over there that isn't beyond what they're already doing. So I have four requests. Number one is I request the town to disapprove this budget as presented. Number two, I want to request the town to change the tax rate to 6.25. Number three, I want to change, request a change in schedule so that the public hearing on the budget is presented one month before the town council votes on it, which would involve the Finance Committee getting the, and the town staff and the budget in by April, having a public hearing in May, and voting on it in June. Because I don't think it's fair for people that are opposed to stuff or who even support to have that public hearing at the same time you're voting. You guys have no time to react or make changes to the budget. Okay? So I don't expect any change. I expect you to approve it. But this is what I requested immediately. And then the last thing I'm going to do is to request that the budget hearing, when it's on the agenda, it is the first public hearing on the agenda. It's not later. We're not talking about this at 9:30 on the town council meeting. It's been going on for two and a half hours, roughly. So, and I would like to leave you with, just to remind you what I did last year, a vote to approve this budget as is, is a vote to approve the tax increases that were put into effect last year as a result of the property, the increase in property valuations. And if you remember, that didn't go well for some of the last council members. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the budget? Hearing none. We now open a period of five minutes for rebuttal for people that are in favor of the budget. Anyone who wishes to speak in rebuttal in favor of the budget? Yes, sir. His hand went up a little bit faster than yours.
Admiral Raven, 5931 Pepperton. Just one small comment. The increase in the value of our homes went up like 22%, raising our taxes accordingly. In that same period of time, or a little less actually, inflation went up 25%. Therefore, we're actually paying with cheaper dollars than we were before. So lowering the, and you have $2 million in your ready day fund. That's worth 80% of what it was four years ago. So lowering your tax rates is not a good idea. I think .08 is a fine rate. I think it represents, let's say, the value that we get out of the Oak Ridge. And I'm in support of the current budget as it's presented. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Jacob Binder, 722 Oak Ridge, here in Oak Ridge. I just wanted to address some points the gentleman made regarding how this is a big government tax and spend budget. Some of those issues were raised last year. I remember Councilwoman Clomond, the response said that this was, that was a year of large projects, and spending has gone down significantly from last year. Some folks here may remember, I spoke in opposition to some of those aspects of that budget last year. I thought there were aspects that could have been cut, things where we were spending too much money. But I do think the budget this year is entirely reasonable, to his point about how we have exorbitantly high tax rates. We do still have, there are plenty of other places in this county you get a higher municipal tax rate. Oak Ridge is fairly conservative in that regard. And I would just say, the estimated revenue from property taxes from last year's budget to this, it's about a $53,000 increase, taken across all the residents of our town, it's about a $700 increase per person. That's not, I don't think, exorbitantly high, particularly when you look at some of the benefits we're getting, the expansion of the new park, and all the things that council and town are doing. To the point about the hearing schedule, I remember there was some discussion about that when you all approved the red house bid, that, you know, people weren't given enough time to voice their opinions. Budget was presented to council, I believe, last month, and certainly was available publicly then, the Finance Committee meetings, or even though it attend those. There hasn't been, I think, ample opportunity for the public to interact with this budget, to voice their concerns. And so I think that, you know, certainly it would be good to make some amendments so that people are more available, that they know that those opportunities are there to engage with the budget. But I don't think that those concerns are so significant, we should vote against it this time around. So I support the budget and that our council will vote for it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in rebuttal? Since there was a rebuttal, there's five minutes for people in opposition to rebuttal. Anyone in opposition who wishes to rebut? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Does council want to move to a motion and then discuss, or does council wish to discuss and then make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Then let's make a motion to either approve or deny, disapprove or modify the budget. We can do all through any of those.
I move that we approve the budget ordinance, adopting and modifying the Town of Oak Ridge budget for fiscal year 24, 25.
Is there a second? Second? Budget's been made, second discussion. Ms. Snyder, you made the motion, so we have the floor first.
Okay. I just, again, want to thank Mr. Bruce, Mr. Anders, the Finance Committee, and all of our committees who contribute their budgets and their information. And I encourage everyone to take, if you haven't already, take a good look at it. It is true that this, that our current tax rate is necessary to fund future projects. Quite simply, we wouldn't be able to do the capital improvement plan that this council has approved if we lowered the tax rate. That's why I'm against that. It would put larger projects beyond the five-year window of our current capital budget, such as pickleball and tennis courts, well out of reach for the foreseeable future. Finance did a great job in making it clear that decreasing taxes at this point, when our population, town services, and parks are growing, simply isn't an option. I would point out to Mr. Walraven's point that inflation is also a huge factor. Any reduction in taxes, most people don't know this, but say a .5, .5 cent, half-cent decrease would amount to 146,000 approximately. But that would go up to around 200,000 because we would lose county taxes if we lower our tax rate. It's a little complicated, but within a few years, this would be a huge loss of around a million dollars. Residents can view our capital improvement plan online. The largest of our capital expenses is continued debt service payments on the loan that the Town Park took out to pay for our, for our new park. And this park, although it looks like it's just grass and easy to maintain, it takes a lot of people to maintain it. So other projects are listed in the, in the budget message that Mr. Bruce, that Mr. Bruce presented. The real hit to the town, if we lower taxes, is to paralyze our progress on things like projects and water infrastructure to serve residents and businesses alike. This in turn would likely paralyze meaningful economic development of our commercial core, since businesses want municipal water. So we complain about the recent revaluation, but the result is we see, as Mr. Mees pointed out, just how much our property values have increased. Although the numbers came from the county, the increase in property values comes from, as he pointed out, Oak Ridge's well-deserved reputation as a wonderful place to live. And I think it's wonderful because our town councils have historically focused on meaningful investments in our community. We're not building up a huge nest egg and just sitting on it. We're investing those dollars in the services and amenities that our residents enjoy and appreciate. That's where your tax dollars go. It goes to those sorts of things and to our future. And I'll vote for that anytime. And I'll vote for that anytime. Anything else? Uh, it's just politics. Thank you.
Mr. Greason? No comment. Mr. Stone?
Um, I'm going to support the budget, and I do it in the spirit of compromise and in support of the excellent work that the finance committee did. Um, and I appreciate the fact that the finance committee, um, gave due consideration to my questions concerning production and the tax rate. Um, so that means, uh, I want the citizens to be aware of my position. Um, I did explore the option of reversing the twenty-twenty-two tax increase with the finance committee. Um, all these questions about whether there was a tax increase or not. Um, I had a citizen actually hand me his tax bill that shows that, you know, it sure did go up. And you don't have to believe me, uh, you can go online, you can look at your tax bill, you can look at anybody's tax bill a lot of the way. Um, and you can talk to the staff, and you can talk to the finance officer. Uh, we're paying our property taxes. Um, Gilbert County's the biggest town on our tax, by the way. That, it's not Oak Ridge, it's Gilbert County. Um, but we don't control Gilbert County. Uh, we do control the town, we control the town's spending. Um, the, the tax increase has been said to be a minimal amount of money, but that's really a diversion because nobody gets to decide what your fa- family finances are and how you spend your money. Uh, it assumes that, um, the elected bodies' plans for your money is more important or precarious or way, uh, than how you manage your finances. Our town is growing, and we're seeing construction going on everywhere, and that's a good thing. The new properties are generating property tax revenue. Um, additional revenue should offset, uh, a tax increase, um, that we have, um, and it should be to the benefit of the established residents if we control our spending, which you heard. Um, we've heard oftentimes about the fact that Oak Ridge is like number four at the bottom of the list of property tax, uh, in the state of North Carolina, lower than ninety-eight percent or ninety-nine percent of, uh, municipalities. And that's true. Uh, we have an excellent, uh, tax rate, um, with a caveat is we don't provide services that most towns do, nor do we want to. Um, we're a limited service town, and that's one of the draws that people are moving to Oak Ridge for. Is it's limited services, people stay out of our business and leave us alone. Um, our biggest expense aside from paying down the debts of past spending, um, is personnel. Uh, the staff takes care of our biggest asset, which is the park, and they do a great job of it. The park is really the only service that we provide. Um, so we do have low taxes, um, but we also don't provide the services that would raise those taxes. Uh, let's make sure that we have those conversations and we acknowledge both. Uh, in the end, spending commitments and decisions paid off projects now puts the town in a position that the current tax rate is necessary to pay our bills. Whether I like it or not, I know these decisions come at a price, uh, and we do have to pay our bills. Hopefully, we'll be able to explore tax relief for the citizens in the next year. Uh, you've got my pledge, and I'm going to work towards that. Couple of comments on the speakers. Um, the first one, uh, I never liked the term because it's been used too much, is the randy day fund. Um, we have a randy day fund. We didn't get to spend it when we had pandemic, and we didn't spend it when inflation hit double digits, but we sure did spend it whenever we funded the revenue house. As far as the schedule, I totally agree. Uh, past practices of having the presentation of the budget and allowing the citizens to speak, um, a month in advance, I'm sorry, the, um, the opportunity for the citizens to speak a month in advance, um, to help council prepare for the budget. And I, I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's probably something we ought to consider. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
I'd like to thank Stuart John and the finance committee for the hard work they've done. I've been on the finance committee for several years until this last year, but I know the hard work that goes in and looking at every line item and trying to make sure that what is projected we spend is, is accurate. Um, so again, congratulations to that committee. I, I think it's, when I think back to when I ran for, uh, council, one of the things that I, um, heard was a lot, a lot of interest in pickleball, tennis courts, basketball courts to be built. In our current budget, this is a park, I think, five years, maybe six years out. So the town still has, and probably the citizens of the town still have a lot of desires to see more amenities come into, uh, the new park. Um, and I think we need to consider how to go about bringing those things forward, whether it's from grants or however we can do that, but I think that needs to be done. I'm, I'm happy that the tax rate remains the same. Um, we all have seen, all of us have seen inflation, the town has seen inflation. Um, and hopefully that's getting back under control within the next eighteen to twenty-four months. Um, but it's something we have to live with as we are expanding our service offerings. And we live in life from that, and I think, again, the budget is a good budget, and we should.
All right, um, the key thing I do when I, when I look at our taxes, are we getting value, um, for that? I don't, I don't so much focus on the actual tax rate or the taxes. I focus on, are we getting value, uh, for the taxes we pay? And I've used this analogy for many years, um, comparing it to a membership at the YMCA. The YMCA currently, for a family, charges approximately a thousand dollars. Uh, the tax, the Oak Ridge taxes on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house is four hundred dollars. So the question is, are we getting equal, similar type benefits, uh, for that four hundred dollars versus the thousand dollars for the YMCA? Now, the YMCA has a boom, we don't have a boom. But we have a, a lot of the other things. We, like I said, we have extensive park, we have trails, uh, we have the ball fields and the multipurpose fields that the youth association uses and things like that. So I look at it and say, I'm getting value for my, uh, my taxes. My taxes actually are four hundred dollars, and my house is valued. Uh, I, I forget what it's all tied in, but that'll pay quite four hundred dollars, but close. Um, but the new park has two multipurpose fields, has irrigation. Um, those fields have to be built on a regular basis. Um, as we mentioned, uh, inflation, while it's easing, we're still, we're living with the result of the inflation. We're not going through any period where things are getting dramatically cheaper. Uh, so inflation has hit us hard. But even with that, we've been able to hold our tax rates last year. And so does a lot of pressure on that. But like I said, I feel we're getting value for the amount we pay in taxes. And that's, like I said, that's how I gauge whether or not we're paying the appropriate taxes. I don't so much focus on exactly what it is, but am I getting value? But I feel we are getting value. And as far as the, the pressure that would be put on, our volunteer committees evaluate what the citizens of, of Oak Ridge want. Do we always get the things we want? No. Do we always, uh, do things get approved that you may not approve of? But for the most part, the residents of the town have asked for the things we're doing. Residents have asked for additional multipurpose fields. Residents have asked for, uh, an accessible playground. The new playground, when, when, when the park opens up on Sunday, please go take a look at that, uh, accessible playground. Even if your child does not need the things they've given you, it is a fascinating little park that kids are just going to have a blast with. But these are the kind of things that people ask for. And we've had, we've had mortar crusts, we can't fill pickleball. Uh, I think that's something we should revisit, see if we can be creative about that, and hopefully have something there for in this future. But like I said, are we getting value? I feel we aren't getting value, so let's not drag it on yet. Oh, as far as why we weren't first is, I believe, items that are continued from previous meetings get heard first, and that's why the easement, uh, public hearing got heard first because it was considered old business. So that was why it was probably put first. Um, otherwise, the budget would have been first. As to, as far as periods of time for citizens to interact, the finance committee meetings are open to the public. Uh, so I, that's an opportunity. Last month, the budget was presented during citizen comment. You could have come up and commented on the budget. Uh, also, I think several of us have had done outreach and said, look, contact the ZMBT and look at the budget, ask questions before. Uh, so I believe we are doing a pretty decent job of, of do, of getting the budget out there with sufficient time for citizens to have input on there. So with that, any further comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, opposed, the budget carries. Uh, next one is petition for voluntary annexation. Is Sean going to introduce that? What's that?
Tonight we have a, uh, tonight we have a, also a property that is proposed to be developed into a subdivision. Um, the subdivision plan was approved for development. Um, or the preliminary plan was approved. As part of that, um, the owners of this parcel have agreed to, want to annex this property in future development into the town corporate limits. And the future development will be known as Southern Pines, and it's located off Forsite, the southern side of Forsite Ridge, on the west side of Oak Ridge.
Okay, this is a public hearing. There's a twenty-minute period for anyone who should seek in favor of this annexation. Anyone who should speak in favor of this annexation? Seeing none, is there anyone who should seek in opposition to this annexation? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion of the thing. I think we can go right to motion, I believe. Is there a motion to approve or deny the request for voluntary annexation?
I move to approve the request for voluntary annexation ordinance number zero dash two, zero two four, dash two, dash oh four.
Zero second, there. Uh, I'll just make a gentleman request. Is there any discussion? Anyone who should make a discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. I think she already adjusted.
I see people taking off their jackets. I hold it a little bit. I, I hold it twice.
All right. Okay. We've, we've had a number of public hearings where we've heard from the public, but now there is a period where you can basically talk about anything you like. So we're going to have a section of public comments. Uh, please limit your comments to three minutes, state your name and address, recognize, and come up to the podium and play.
Uh, Brian Dawson, five-nine-zero-two, Pepper Road. Originally, I came to speak about pickleball, but I'd like to note that, uh, public comments came before public hearings. It might be nice if we have a bigger audience to say this. Um, but yeah, so pickleball, um, I came to ask, uh, to accelerate the plan through development of pickleball courts in the Heritage Farm Park. I'm sure that people came before me, uh, delivered the point and statistics, like pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America for the third year in a row. Thirty-six and a half million people in America play pickleball. Uh, it's experienced two-hundred-and-twenty-three percent growth in the past three years. There are currently thirteen thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine places to play pickleball in America. I think that should be thirteen thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy. Um, it's expected to grow another seven percent, seven point seven percent per year through twenty-twenty-eight, and fourteen percent Americans, uh, have played at least one time. Um, it is the third most participated sport after only running and biking, which I guess you could do on the trails that were discussed, um, so on and so forth. So I'm not here to really rehash these statistics, but I am here to take a more individual, uh, look at the impact that these courts would have on the community. I have three reasons for my request. Health, social, and economic outcomes are affected by the installation of these courts. So, uh, healthy constituents are happy constituents and vice versa. Pickleball prevents, or promotes physical activity. It's a very accessible and approachable sport. Uh, some people like to, to comment on the injuries that have increased uh, because of pickleball and emergency rooms around the country, but it's because, um, there are more than thirty million people playing and you can see a lot more injuries. And I think it really speaks to that it promotes activity, and some activity may not be from people who are typically active. So, uh, the accessibility really speaks to the social nature of the game. So every night this week, and I took this night off to come here and speak about pickleball, I drive down to Berman Park where they have ten full-size courts and three small courts. Um, quite often, the courts are full and they have twenty people waiting. So I could math it, sixty people at a minimum. Sometimes they have thirty people on two courts of a lesson, so there can be a hundred people there on any given weeknight participating in this game. Uh, the format is I show up, I put my paddle in line, and I join three strangers to play. Uh, because it's accessible, age and gender does not have much of an impact on ability. Uh, I quite frequently play with people in their seventies and get beat by them regularly. I would invite any one of you to come down with me, uh, any night of the week or on the weekend to see what kind of community that these courts foster. Um, you know, I make, it's primarily where I make my friends, or will be friends, to play, and I believe it's to the economic impact of not having pickleball courts in the town of Oak Ridge. So, I'm out of time. I'll continue next time.
Anyone else who should speak? Yes, whichever person stood up faster.
Um, my name's Frank Yorl, thirteen-eight-nine, Forsites Road. I just have a couple of comments on how the voluntary annexation, which you just asked for, five months of this discussion actually happened. We look at a year ago, in this very moment, there was a resounding hearing before that was planning and zoning, it came from planning and zoning, resented, came to hear a planning and zoning. One of the questions from the city councilman was, quote, "Has the owner offered the opportunity to be annexed?" Fair enough, fair question. Fast forward to a year, the planning and zoning committee ended in April. The packet that was included with the planning and zoning committee and the same foundation, that was not those applied on. The relation paper from that packet was the voluntary annexation request. That started not past a stiff test. There was some coercion and comments here earlier. Where should the planning and zoning processes interact with voluntary annexation processes? In my opinion, they shouldn't, but that's what it looks like. And you have council asking, have they been offered the ability to annex? And then a year later, when the subdivision request comes in, the annexation request asks for the amendment. I don't think that's right. Thank you.
Good evening, John Coldy, um, I live in six-seven-zero-six, New York Run Drop here in Ridge. And I want to share some thoughts with you about the, uh, security system that you reported on today, or tonight. Park security proposed some early marks of significant shift into what I think is a false safetyism mentality here. The plan is labeled as a park security system, and it's supposed to address a handful of brigades at the park. Let's kind of put that a little bit into perspective. There's been five reported thefts in the last year. You can get that from Community Crime Watch, that's the, that's the, uh, source that the sheriff encourages us to look at. Consider this, at Berman Park, there's over eleven of the same instances in the last, in the last twelve months. They have. They have security systems, they have cameras. They have not made a difference in effectiveness in prosecuting or in catching the criminals that are doing these things. Only the statistics and, excuse me, the research that I'm following shows that only actively monitored systems make any difference in this kind of crime. Actively monitored means that somebody's watching it, somebody's responding to it, somebody's doing something about it when it happens. And I can, on behalf of sheriff, research information with you separately. I gotta ask, will this system help us find the dog poopers in the park? Is it gonna keep, is it gonna help us catch the people chasing out of the park, out of the crosswalk here on Oak Ridge? I don't think so. But it's probably gonna be able to be able to see who's on the amphitheater stage where they're not supposed to be. You might find somebody on the closed field. It's just not gonna stop any of the criminals that we're trying to stop. The justification of the system as a reasonable response to our crime seems misleading. And it's considered it's high cost and questionable effectiveness. I don't see how you can, you can in good conscience pass this. I think there's a few things you need to think about. You gotta demand, we should be demanding answers to these questions. What other simple things can you do to prevent these crimes? What, can anybody request camera footage and license plate data? And if not, who's gonna decide which requests to to bring? Are you, is the town gonna track and disclose every data request? And finally, is the town prepared to, for any potential legal consequences for mismanagement of this data? Without satisfactory answers, we can't, you shouldn't in good conscience pass this proposal. And I would just say that there's there are numerous alternative solutions. There's much less invasive, cheaper, more effective options than installing security cameras. Ultimately, it's essential to balance the real, real security concerns with cost, individual privacy, and community values. Please note, you can always just lock up your stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak? Yes, ma'am. Gotta be fast.
Good evening, my name is Chelsea Young, 5902 Pepper Road. I'm gonna finish Brian's economic point real quick, that after they place pickleball at Birmill, they will go to Greensboro for further socialization. So if they were to be playing in Oak Ridge, they can support our local businesses after playing pickleball as well. Also speaking on my own path, I was born and raised in Oak Ridge, and I do play pickleball often, maybe not as much as Brian, on various public courts, and I definitely don't play as well as him. But my experience is that pickleball culture is very friendly. It's very warm and welcoming despite my lack of skill. I've also seen that there is diversity among pickleball players. And I heavily support celebration of diversity in our community. So I believe that adding pickleball to our park sooner than later makes us the unique and desirable destination, supports our community as a whole.
Thank you. There you go.
Andrew 99, five six seven nine, Eastern Raceway, Oak Ridge. I'm also the co-chair of Marks and Rec. Just wanted to say briefly on the recommendation that we tonight where you review the park security system. I do thoroughly recommend you do approve that. A couple of just facts on that. I do have over 20 years of industry experience in security. It's my occupation, it's what I do, they get paid out. There is a lot of data, both in systems I personally manage, here in Guilford County, it's all across the entire nation of the United States. I manage over 48 states currently with the security type of system such as that. There's a big difference between the title level of systems. There's a couple of quick facts I'd like to point out on this. Number one, this is not just parks security. This is a complete network as you already have the packet of information. It's four separate vendors, it's a very large project. It's the expansion of the current parks Wi-Fi. It's adding Wi-Fi at the new park. It's adding in the power infrastructure for that, which we utilize for other things we've already mentioned, lighting up the park signs, other things that the power can be utilized for them as well, plus the security, which can be actively monitored. The council I know has had to operate a demo as well as Marks and Rec's demo. This system, all systems are not created equally, just like everything else. All cars aren't the same, all camera systems aren't the same. This is a very high-level system. It literally can spot someone with the red shirt and actively alert you or the, excuse me, the police to that same activity. You can search that, find the crosshair. It's a very advanced capable system. Happy to answer any questions you want to have about the project and system directly during your time when you're reviewing that. So I wanted to just hear from those questions. But the system is capable of that type of intelligence that will help mitigate crime. I have ample evidence of one, as I realize have been used in federal cases and, you know, put, you know, criminals away because of that video evidence. It is actionable video intelligence. The final reason I wanted to remind everyone is we have a grant for this. So there's a $70,000 grant from the state that we have to fund this. I believe the proposal was just under $7,000. So we're looking at less than $2,000 investment of the town's funds because we already have a grant to fund this. So if we choose not to approve this, we're literally just throwing in $70,000 somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Maria Adams, 5999, Morgue Church, North Oak Ridge. You gotta know that I love Oak Ridge to sit here for three hours and listen to to her presentation on the trails, but I use the trails, and so I was glad to listen to that. Anyway, I truly do love Oak Ridge and of course my town Summerfield and Stoneville. I think the three towns, the three municipalities work well together and I'm very involved in the Summerfield community just as much as I enjoy coming to Oak Ridge. A few weeks ago, the Oak Ridge Council received a letter from DNI's Brandon, the chair of the Guilford County Board of Education, and Betty Jenkins, the vice chair, requesting that the council allocate a portion of Oak Ridge property taxes to fund tutoring services for Guilford County schools. Despite the fact that Guilford County citizens already contributed 50% of property taxes to GCS, the board chair requested funds from every municipality in Guilford County. I commend this council for not participating in this request for several reasons. Primarily, the decision to involve municipalities in this request was not a full board decision. There was never an agenda item to discuss or put forth a motion, which means there was never a vote from the full board on this action. Our District Three School Board representative, Mr. Michael Logan, never had the chance to discuss or ask questions about the terms of the request, how the funds would be transparently handled, or how it would actually benefit Oak Ridge students. The board chair made a unilateral decision without representation from our local board member, Mr. Logan. This incident is indicative of the charmed pattern with the board chair. Last year, when Mr. Logan was nominated by the Republican Party to fill for vacant District Three seat, Board Chair DNI Hayes Green led an effort to deny Mr. Logan his rightful seat for months, leaving citizens in Oak Ridge and all of District Three without representation. In the process, she defamed Mr. Logan, who was still serving his 26-year career as a teacher at Southern Denver High School. This misuse of power and lack of respect for citizens here and for Mr. Logan is deeply concerning. I want to remind this community of an incident from last year involving a secret meeting that took place. During the meeting, the board chair, the board attorney, and Mr. Bill Goebbels conspired to deny Mr. Logan his rightful seat on the board and instead installed Goebbels. So secretly, Goebbels was removed from the board through legislative action, but instead of accepting this decision, Goebbels' actions led to increased legal expenses for the taxpayers. So circling back around to my original comment is that I think it's important for District Three citizens to be represented by our D, by our District Three member in matters of Guilford County schools. And just finish just one second. I would like to express my gratitude towards Mr. Michael Logan, our District Three School Board member, for his unwavering dedication to the students and families of Oak Ridge. Mr. Logan exemplifies humility, honesty, hard work, and commitment in his role, and his contributions are truly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak? Yes.
I'll try to do this real quick. I can't remember when we got here. It was today, right? On the way here, I felt better already, 5931 Pepper Road. On the way here this evening, I stopped by the new park and saw that the construction on the honor green has started. And I'm thrilled. It's been a long gestation for that project. I would, and I also see that $60,000 have been budgeted for the second phase of that project. The project's been broken into two phases. And I would encourage the staff and anything that you can do to have the second phase kind of dovetail effectively into the first phase of the project. So we don't have two separate construction periods going on as best as we can. So that we can save money and actually have the full project completed for the honor of our veterans. Thank you.
Yes, sir, in the back.
William Goebbels, Bill Goebbels, 1402 Western Road in Greensboro, North Carolina. Good evening, council members, Mr. Perry. I want to talk about, you know, the school funding issue that came up that was just brought up. That program actually works pretty good. It's a high dose tutoring. Our students went back 10 years during COVID. This is bringing those students that want to get involved up to that 10-year breaking down a bit earlier. But as I looked at funding for schools and asking the towns to give us more money, it was brought up, they're already paying taxes. I'm paying a lot of taxes, a heck of a lot of taxes. And I started looking at this when I was on the school board. I said, what are our funding sources? We have three funding sources, federal, state, and local. Federal is right about where it is, tons of mandates, pain in the neck. Local, state, as you know, is rank 47th. We're rank 47th in the nation for funding our schools, just above Mississippi. We gotta fix that. You can't fix that overnight, you gotta build it in a little bit of time. The last one is local, because I said, are we paying a lot of taxes here? Are we like getting rid of? So I started looking at it and I said, you know, I used to live in Connecticut, and my house was a 3,000 square goodhouse. And I was paying about $2,200 a year. It's now $26,000. Taxation, you guys were talking about all day. Taxation is not the way to solve this problem. It's a broken system to tax and tax and tax. We gotta come up with alternative income sources. In one way, so I started looking at these local counties and I said, how come New Haven or New Yanville and Orange Chapel Hill are double, triple what we pay? And I said, so why don't I go down to meet the superintendent? So I met the superintendent and I said, how are you doing this? They said, we're a $1.6 billion endowment. We just pull the interest off. We don't touch the principal. We have less than $20 million here. When I was in Boy Scouts, our consulate, $12 million. So we need to build an endowment. So when I become out of school, we're all, we're all start committing together and start building our endowment up to a billion dollars. We're the third largest school system, we can do that. In this town, we financed the Tander Center for $85 million, Westover Church for $30 million. I started a bank, tribal business bank. We raised $58 million in 18 months. We can do it. Put the right people on the committee, build up an endowment, and stop asking taxpayers for their money to fund our schools. Thank you for letting me speak.
I don't know what, I don't know what's going on. Are the doors being opened?
Anyone else who wants to speak?
Oh, who's that?
If not, we'll close the first section of all the comments and move to the town management report.
Okay, that's too low, we can't hear.
Still, we go.
Thank you for the reminder.
All right.
Couple items for council's consideration. First is approval of addition to the addition of a small portion of case on drive to the North Carolina State Meeting System.
This is next to the school, right?
Correct. About two-thirds of case on drive is state meeting. This will extend it several hundred feet to get to the point where the school driveway exits on the case of.
All right. Any initial questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the addition of case of drive to the North Carolina State Meeting System?
We approve the addition.
Second. And then is finished discussion? All those favorites say aye. Next.
Secondly, is a consideration of Resolution 2024 of assistance to appeal the 30 mile average speed limit in the St. Louis subdivision and establishing 25 mile average speed limit at the request of that person.
And that request, that's what, the man is sitting there?
Um, no, I don't know.
He's curious.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve or deny the approval of the repeal of the speed limit to 25 miles an hour zone area subdivision? Yeah, okay. Did you get the motion? You made the initial motion.
I did not.
You made the initial motion. All right, and then there was a second?
Let's do it.
All right, now, any questions?
Was the consideration for the repeal of the speed limit, did it come from the citizens? How did this come up?
It did come from the homeowners association. We had them, it did come from the homeowners association. We had them contact DOT. They did a study and looked at the neighborhood, and they are the ones that wrote this request to us.
Any further discussion? All those favorites say aye. Aye opposed. Carries. If you have two adjustments, please go.
Yes, the third item is a request to revise the 2024 town of Oak Ridge meeting schedule. The Water Advisory Committee has requested a change on their regular monthly meeting from the fourth Wednesday to the second Wednesday, which was highlighted in the packet. Second Wednesday, 1:30 PM. I also like to make an additional change that was not highlighted and adds amounts of CTR, many meets in person on Tuesday of each month. The schedule currently indicates that they meet virtually. So I would ask for those two changes, amounts of CTR, meeting in person, and Water Advisory Committee in the second Wednesday.
Are there motions to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those favorites say aye. Aye opposed.
Next item is a consideration of a renewal of the air local agreement for animal shelter and animal control services by Guilford County. This has been on a three-year renewal cycle. This new renewal is actually on a two-year renewal cycle. The cost for the services has been calculated on a prorated, essentially a per capita population basis, Oak Ridge is a percentage of the population of the county as a whole, and the cost is associated or is applied to the town for that. The last, where this new agreement actually is a slight, very slight reduction.
About $500 for a shot.
Yeah, we're about $500 less than we were last year, but it will be reevaluated as their budget changes and as population ratios change as well.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the proposal agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. And we've heard, we've, we're capable of mine, right? Actually, it's not purely yours to make that decision. Any other business?
No other business.
We move on to all business consideration of mobile contract park security system.
I'll just briefly introduce this. There's really not a whole lot to add from last month other than the fact that we received the quote from the company that will be subcontracting with Oak Ridge Electric and do the board work. Total cost of all components of the project is $71,559. A portion of that, approximately $1,100, is an annual fee licensing of the software. But the capital costs, therefore the capital cost is referencing a little bit of $7,000. I would defer to our expert, Mr. Hekaton, who's already addressed some of the concerns. But if there are any questions about the nature of the proposed one, I'll refer the questions to Mr. Hekaton.
All right, before we ask for a motion to adjourn. All right, before we ask for a motion, are there any questions or clarification for the law?
So, um, we've been having smashing grabs this morning. And it was brought up by one of the citizens that, this is sporadic. And even law enforcement said, I forget what the term they used, but basically one of the smashing grab court where they drowned up and they drowned back. As the citizen pointed out, diligence by the park visitors is a single aspect of way to prevent crimes. Uh, we'll keep pushing this point. We'll keep continuing to support law enforcement's efforts and get this message out. I would like to point out, there was an excellent exchange of ideas and options and concerns on a thread that I started on next door. And for the most part, it was informative, uh, and constructive. Major concern, uh, is where the system is going to be placed and how it's going to be used. And right now, we're in the early stages of answering those questions. But based on the conversations that we've had thus far and based on my position on this, that I want to assure everybody, this system won't go live until we have policies and procedures in place to answer the citizens' questions. Uh, policies and procedures will be developed with the assistance of citizens, volunteers, um, and will be communicated to everyone and reviewed before the system is ever turned on. Uh, that would also conclude that we'll involve law enforcement and our legal, um, support to make sure that we have the right policies and procedures. At no time will any of our security systems be used for surveillance of any individual or area. The system is only going to be used for legitimate security purposes and restricted control of our policies to prevent any use other than security services. Access to the system will only be available to law enforcement for the investigations and crimes committed on our town property. This will be clearly detailed in our policies and procedures to meet the legal requirements. Retention of any data will be for the minimal amount of time allowed by law. And as I understand it, that's probably about thirty days, uh, maybe it's less. And unauthorized access or use of our system that is not directly related to security incidents or law enforcement investigations should result or will result from, uh, in legal actions against involved parties. I want to clearly state, we're not going to use the system for any sort of surveillance of anything other than that which provides for the safety and security of the visitors by park. Any ideas or suggestions to the contrary brought to the citizens' attention by me in Oak Ridge Town Council meeting? So that everybody understands that what we're proposing, what we expect to see is a security system when it ends and ends of the park and takes care of security and the safety of the citizens in the park, not for surveillance of people or activities that are not of law enforcement concern.
Just to clarify, staff is going through the process of evaluating what we can and can't do with the information. So I would, I'd verge a little bit from Mr. Stone's statements of absolutes. I don't know exactly what we can and can't do at this moment with the data. So I'm waiting to hear from staff and from our attorney, say what we can and can't do. Can and can't do with that information. Whether or not that information is public or private, we call it. I believe those questions haven't been answered yet, so I'm not going to go on right here and say what we will or will not do. So I just, I just want that very little bit from, uh, from that and say, look, you know, I, I think our intentions are in the same direction, but I think we need to wait for some legal advice on exactly what we can and can't do with our, with, with the fee.
I would agree that the, uh, go ahead. Did you understand that story? Oh, no, that's okay. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say in response to Mayor Pro Tim's comments and my experience, staff has already had preliminary statements on this matter. And I have, uh, provided a preliminary opinion, which basically tracks with what Mayor Pro Tim said. And as long as this is counted in terms of, um, its purpose being for law enforcement, then it remains not subject to public release under the Public Records Act. And I have advised the council that as part of, first of all, the council does need to adopt the policy. Vote tonight has to do with equipment.
Right.
And I think that's powerful. I think that is putting the force before the card correctly, that you get the equipment, but before you deploy it, without the policy. But I think that policy in terms of the law, best practices as, and the school government relevance, basically towards of what Mayor Pro Tim said. And, uh, that protects the public's interest in not being surveilled with this being only for law enforcement purposes and working with the local sheriff's department and taking the advice, for instance, on retention. They may say thirty days. I, I don't know. But that would be a law enforcement call again purposes. As long as council says it's for law enforcement, it comes within that law enforcement exception. Under the Public Records also, that would not be subject to any public records request. And whether it's a part of the system, it would not be subject to it. And then retention would get rid of the images, the images within a certain time. So we've looked at our preliminary, but then I can provide more formal statements requesting with staff.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. To be honest, I haven't got the, you know, I say I'm pretty much fine with it. That's what you're saying. I just say we're going to wait until we have the official, uh, policy to say what's what we should do.
Uh, yeah, the, I was just going to say those are great points to the Mayor Pro Tim. And I'm glad you're in sync with those because I would support that forward.
Um, if you thought that, is there a motion to approve of, approve the contract or decline it?
I move that we approve the contract for the park security project, the various contracts as, as presented.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, uh, you made additional motion. Is there any discussion?
No, great project. Lot to do again. Time to go.
Mr. Grease, under comments. Mr. Stone?
Yeah, so anything I can say?
Nothing. I, uh, I share some similar concerns whether or not this would be a, um, a deterrence. Uh, one of the reasons I'm supporting it, two reasons. It's given us a lot of infrastructure as aside than wifi, uh, which we would have done anyway. We're gonna have, we would probably, we would have probably put wifi in the new park, probably put wifi in the farmhouse and expand wifi. The other reason I'm inclined to do it is the sheriff is supportive of this and the sheriff works with the county and the county decided to give us the money to do this. So that's why I'm, I'm, I'm willing to go with this because, like I said, the county said, look, this is something we like. Sheriff said something you like and they're giving us the money to do it. Uh, we're gonna have about eleven hundred dollars a year and we're gonna have to pay for basically the monitoring software and the cloud storage. So I'm fine with that. So with that, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And again, we'll, we'll get a policy in place before we actually come out. All right, uh, and, uh, the financial report.
All right, everyone should have got the financial report. Pretty much normal, uh, assets two point eight million, uh, fund balance is two point seven, uh, with one point three two over that committed and, uh, the rest is, uh, rest is restricted except for a hundred and twenty thousand in assignment. Uh, you've got your statements as well on the balance sheet, the income statement. And then the balances divided between the three depository banks, list of income, expense items, and comparisons to budget. Then you're followed by the, that's schedule two, and we've got the debt schedule. Schedule, um, which is schedule four, for a stick. Uh, debt schedule is number four, and we've got a water fund. Followed by the new schedule at the back is the, the capital projects fund, which is for the park. Uh, you managed to splice out a fund fifty so that you've got, um, a one-page detail showing the revenues and expenses affecting that project. For the month, uh, we've just received information we're receiving property taxes last month from twenty-eight sixty-two thirty-two. Motor vehicle taxes is ten five oh seven oh three for a total of thirteen twenty-sixty-nine. That's all collections through five thirty-one. Uh, monthly sales tax, property tax are unaccountable to standby. We received interest remakes, applying to zone fees, software waste disposal. Uh, we did a disbursement. You'll see a negative number there on the dog park fund donations that were received primarily last month. We have facility renewals, special events, other park revenue donations to veterans honor ring. And, uh, the main thing this month was the annual bear inclined excise tax receipts, which is on all the bear inclined stuff, which is the grocery store written and, um, basically. So, uh, fairly normal. Uh, we get that once a year. Uh, the investments we're monitoring is normal. We've supported the state for grant compliance. Uh, the norms of park, other skip, CIP process, budget orders, preparation, workers' comp, um, and property casualty insurance, uh, renewals, uh, are underway. In fact, I got, uh, one email this morning with the quote of the workers' comp, uh, which appears to be within the amounts budgeted, um, this next year. So, um, those renewals are all working through. Um, and as usual, uh, I've got the I R E, our request of motion and grant any authorities with just the budget through six thirty twenty-three to ensure balanced budget and report back. Uh, the council will be at email on July sixth, twenty twenty-three, which is the wrong date. Six thirty of twenty-four and it's July the eleventh of twenty-four. I do apologize. Uh, because last year, due to the schedule, we moved it up and I did not catch that. I do apologize. Um, but it would be through six thirty, uh, with the meeting being on the eleventh, which is also July fourth. Uh, but overall, that's pretty much everything. We're getting towards the last month. I'll be doing the adjustments. Uh, we're preparing, um, for the end, which eventually will start the audit process right after that. Um, as soon as we are out here tonight, in fact, I am emailing the folks in Guilford County that we're meeting our tax rate as soon as it is approved, so they take the order and the compliance to feed it up to the state and out to the banks and et cetera, et cetera. So, um, this news will be a pretty busy month. July's will be a busy one.
All right, we need two motions. There's clearly a motion to accept the funding and software reports. A motion to accept.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And then second is to, uh, request a motion to grant a funding so to adjut, to target and adjust the budget through six thirty twenty-one thirty. Is there a motion?
Four.
Twenty twenty-four, yes. Sorry. Two.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you so much for all of us. Uh, do we have anybody left on the committee reports? Uh, Mountain Sea Trail Committee? Other committees? Committee reports? Yes, committee reports.
Special events, those first.
Uh, not in my list. Any particular work?
You're doing the month.
Yeah.
It's true.
Um, we said, so Mountain Sea Trail, I don't see anyone here. Conservationation Youth Committee? Special events? Do you need extra time?
We're in person.
No, you know, I was talking back, so. Our current total for the, uh, the conservation green, uh, these two is twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty. As Ben Walberg said earlier today, um, who's actually has started on the veterans honor ring. Uh, this has been a long road since we started back in two thousand and nineteen. Um, the special events committee were just amazing, putting this all together and as well as the, the community that makes so many wonderful donations to make this happen. Our first order of a hundred and fourteen papers has been submitted to Polar Engraving in Florida. The papers will take approximately four weeks for delivery. Um, we'll have another order, uh, for a second group of papers as soon as we have enough level to, um, give to Polar Engraving. Uh, we had our Memorial Day ceremony last week. Bill Truett was an inspirational speaker and thanks to the Oak Ridge Band and to the scats and all that attended. I'd just like to remind people of, um, right now is that today is the eighteenth anniversary of D-Day. Uh, over a hundred and fifty-six thousand allied soldiers landed on the beaches at Normandy in France. Over four thousand soldiers were killed that day. This battle signaled the beginning of the end of World War Two and made me always remember all their sacrifices. Our Fourth of July parade is coming together, free ice cream from Moon and, um, from, from the Moon and Back and a free bike giveaway for contented kids, pediatric dentistry, new business here at Oak Ridge. Uh, we asked the kids to decorate their bikes with P G I theme items that they supplied or we will provide them. Um, so it's a good time for all and I ask everyone to join us. Uh, we're gonna do again Heritage Day and we'll be baking, um, fruit pies for judging and all the proceeds will go to the veterans honor ring. And last but certainly not least, we, the committee is working behind, part behind the scenes at the Light of the Night and then on Saturday, December sixth. We'd also like to comment on, thank you for passing the security, um, project, uh, the equipment tonight because it's good and completely wired by. And one of the things I've always tried to do is have the music incorporated. Light of the Night, um, when people walk around our park, um, for that month of December, uh, it's so nice to have, um, music and also for the Fourth of July, I'll be great also. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. Any questions?
Thank you all of us. Now, three gentlemen. Thank you for speaking that out.
Good evening, Council. Uh, Austin Goldman, fifty-four oh three, Area Ridge Court, Oak Ridge. Want to give an update regarding, uh, uh, first of all, regarding the issue of approximately thirty-five river birch trees that are in close proximity to the asphalt pathway in Oak Ridge Town Park. About ten of these river birch trees have roots that have extended to the asphalt pathway. They're cracked and raised asphalt created in potentially unsafe condition. Town park staff have taken action and painted these ridges areas to provide awareness to the public and to heighten safety. Your tree committee has met with two experts, uh, Guilford County Forester and Guilford County Urban Forester to gain better recommendation, well, best recommendations to address this tree root asphalt problem as well as maintaining the health of the existing river birch trees. The urban forestry agent provided recommendations where the offended tree roots could be severed, a root barrier installed, and the trees sustained. These recommendations are included in an information packet that you have. As far as next steps, an urban forester, but the urban forester recommended that we engage in a harmonies to evaluate any work that we're seeing first. Uh, the tree committee also, we will go ahead and compile material costs, labor costs, uh, to assess the feasibility of these actions that we'll pass them on back to the council. Uh, the next topic will be treasured trees. The tree committee is taking action in June and July to, to advertise to the public via the Northwest Observer about expanded search for additional treasure trees that exist in the town of Oak Ridge. We also use the comment, um, board next to the park concession stand. We use the town website, social media, our blast media, uh, to get the best of that regarding the treasure trees. Uh, we have had these tree nominations made by August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and these will be trees with outstanding height, outstanding crown spray, and diameter. And lastly, the tree committee is in need of one additional representative. If you have an interest in providing oversight and the care of all trees in our town parks and town maintaining right ways, please advise town council or tree committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Person record?
Good evening, Councilman. It's a John.
Good evening, Councilman, I'm John Brown, eighty-twenty-four, Lethmore Road, uh, Oak Ridge, North Carolina. I'm here to present the future report for our Parks Recreation Advisory Board, held our meeting on May sixteenth. And first, I'd like to thank y'all again for improving the security system. I think it will have a lot to our both parks, and we've been able to expand that really good, so we appreciate the opportunity that y'all trusted us to, to develop that system. Special thanks to camp staff and Adrian Nekro, to, uh, for being on the detailed stories. Uh, wanted to, uh, comment on the last one, it's major music in the park, probably a record for around fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, uh, very good event. We're, uh, this upcoming Saturday, uh, June eighth, the Eighteenth Nation, and we're expecting like three thousand people, so just another big night, uh, so if you come out, that could be great, but guarantees to be a big fun night this Saturday. Uh, the next day, Sunday, we're gonna have, uh, June ninth, the Oak Ridge Opening Ceremony of Heritage Farm Park, due to the playground. And I'm happy, it sounds like we're going to be able to keep the playground open and being able to use the picnic shelter. We aren't able to rent a picnic shelter yet, but at least that will be available for, uh, kids of all ages to play, uh, after this Sunday, so that grand opening is Sunday, this coming Sunday, two-twelve-five. So, that's just a brief, brief update. Uh, any questions or comments?
Uh, just wanted to let you know the park is still without water?
Uh, that, that's correct. I mean, the contractor informed us of a recall on a.
Uh, actually, both parks are without water, as I said.
Uh, we did have an issue at our town park, there's a plumber who'll be, um, on site tomorrow morning to investigate, we're cautiously optimistic that that's taken care of, before using the park. Uh, we have ramped up quite a few, uh, portage jobs, um, in case we are in a contingency situation where we don't have water. However, like I said, we are cautiously optimistic that, um, that we'll be able to take care of the issue tomorrow, we can, we can have a plan in place.
Okay, excellent. Um, again, we also, using the park, can use any number of volunteers in addition to the ones we have right now, because we're expecting, uh, whether we get three thousand, we're expecting more than we've ever had before, so, uh, if you have time to volunteer, uh, they'd be happy to have you do any number of things.
Just show up and find a spot.
You'll find some spot for you. So if you have friends or something like that, would like, and, uh, I'm sure that you can take just for an hour, so if you're able to help out, please do.
Thanks for water.
Yes.
Thank y'all.
Uh, Finance Committee, I think we've covered that. Uh, Water Advisory Committee?
Uh, they didn't meet, but mostly they discussed preparing for the water motion of council next week.
Yeah, it's one of the right, June twenty-seventh, right? It's June twenty-seventh, we're going to have, uh, a work session with, the county town council's gonna have a work session with the Water Advisory Committee, that, that is open to the public. So if you're looking to learn more about the water system that we're proposing, that would be a great time to come in and just be a fly on the wall, to hear what they're gonna teach us. So, again, June twenty-seventh, open to the public. And, start the preservation?
Courtney Hart, fifty-nine oh one, Pepper Road. Uh, HPC did not meet in May for the regular meeting, uh, there were no, no applications. Uh, our book that we're working on has been sent to a graphic designer for the layout, and we had one design review, uh, meeting in the month, uh, past. Brian Wall and I did that.
Thank you. Plankings on it? Anything important, Plankings on it? Okay. Uh, Oak Ridge Military Academy, Oak Ridge Elementary, Oak Ridge Youth Association. And second public comments, anyone like to have a polygon, Mr. Andrews?
Okay. Uh, Sam Andrews, um, I'm here, I'm past the Secretary of Treasuries from the Fire Department, a return rescue company located eighty-three twenty-five, Lethmore Road. Um, tonight, during the county board commissioners meeting, the county budget was presented for public comments already been out. In that budget is a request by the Fire Department for an increase in the fire tax. Um, this was presented in their budget, it's been vetted already by County Finance Department, the County Manager's Office, and has been looked over by the commissioners. Um, this is, this request has not been made lightly. Uh, discussion on this was started last year with County Personnel. Uh, we advanced the concept of trying to go ahead and get ahead of this issue last year because we are experiencing exponential growth in call load, exponential growth in cost. Um, we held off the plan last year with the reevaluation, was that the departments were all told to hold the money and parcel out over five years. Well, that lasted less than a year. Um, we are experiencing extremely high call loads. Oak Ridge exceeded a thousand calls last year. Since the COVID restrictions were lifted in twenty-twenty-one, the call load district wide has increased twenty-four percent. Due to staffing issues and call load in the county, we are assisting the, or its medical services annual service at a higher rate than ever in the district. As part of this process, they're referring upon the guest to a budgeting process annually. Uh, this year, seven departments seeking rate increases because we all share the same issues. And this year, we did an overall budget process followed by additional request for data. We've met with the County Finance Manager and his staff multiple times. We did a updated detailed ten-year C I P based on the latest information. We did a updated budget projection and shot it out five years in the future. Using patterns established by historic data and by County, uh, Finance Department data. The end result is, we are requesting a two-and-a-half cent per under grade increase. This is after eight years of maintaining the next to lowest or lowest tax rate in Guilford County among the fire districts. Um, we have prudently held high on expenditures, invested the yearly growth in district taxes in pursuit of long-range strategic plan in our ten-year C I P that we update every year. For the county, this year, we had forecast out every expenditure for the next five years, forecast cost of our equipment, purchasing, down payments, payment streams, estimated rates of interest. Um, this request to tax increases, need to catch up on deferred capital deeds. We have concrete issues at both stations. We are having to add additional personnel in the next two years in order to keep the call load under control. Our only solution is that we have to start restricting our call load by restricting manpower, staging, or shutting down one station, we're on an exceptionally low staffing debt. Uh, we do not have control of what happens around Station Fifty-One that is in the county. The county is approving massive number of houses being built in that district area, and due to the mutual aid agreement, we're covering quite a few calls with the Rinsport in the seventy-three, sixty-eight intersection. So, this is not something that's been widely held, uh, this has been vetted, it's been looked at, it has been brainstormed now for over two years. So, wanted to make a personal, um, board, wanted to have an announcement tonight. Uh, the period of open for public communist with the county commissioner starting tonight, they have a work session next week, and, um, that's it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Sam. I'm sorry, just, what is our car rate? Uh, one-down, seven-seven.
Anyone else have a comment? Yes, sir.
Mike Logan is a preschooler. Thank y'all for what you do, I understand y'all seats and positions. Um, we'll move to school up there. What is, most people are actually young, they ask people to move to a principal supervisor there, and unfortunately, she will be living in Northwest High School. Uh, there has been a replacement of Dr. Brian Wall, he's coming from Southern Guilford High School. I did not, even though I'm a former employee at Southern Guilford, Principal has been replaced by superintendent at Northwest, maybe Northwest High School, so I'm going to get him to the principal. I think you need to reach out to him, talk with him, thank you for how you're a very brilliant person. And he's actually a member with kids who went to Northwest High School, and so he has a connection and involvement in Northwest, so that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Anyone else have a public comment? We'll move to council comments. Mr. Greason?
Uh, only thing I want to talk about is pickleball courts, I'm a bit supportive of them, and, uh, I think we should buy the money and let them home as quick as we can.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
Uh, I'll second that motion, uh, and I'm gonna run through these quickly. Um, busy month since we last appeared. Uh, I was on, participated in lunch with the, uh, law enforcement, um, officers, uh, Oak Ridge's Eric, uh, Wazaki, and Joe Mannerville of Joey's Burger Bar. Uh, they provided free lunch for any police officer that showed up at, um, Rio, um, on New Garden Road. Uh, there were little elected representatives there, and guests from surrounding towns and cities to say thank you for the commitment that law enforcement community does in serving us. Uh, May seventeenth and eighteenth, I participated with, uh, at the Oak Ridge World Charity Academy's Pacalar, and, uh, the graduation of the hundred and seventy-second class of cadets, um, an outstanding core cadets. Every cadet has been accepted to a college or university, except for those that enrolled directly into the military. Um, forma is the historic center point of this town. May nineteenth, I attended the, uh, sixtieth anniversary celebration of Central Baptist Church's, uh, well, their anniversary. Um, Central again is a offshoot of Union Grove Baptist Church, uh, and it's led by Webber Boyd Carter, Dr. Boyd Carter, acquitted sides of that recognition event, with full support of, uh, Central Baptist Church. Immediately after their celebration on Sunday, Pastor Roy and member Jimmy McDonald left only hours after the celebration, um, to team drive Samaritan's first man on one, uh, vehicles, the big rig, um, full-blown kitchen, and they headed into, sorry. Um, but it's the big rig that can feed thousands of people a day, and they took it down to Texas, they team drove to get it down to Texas, uh, to help with the flooding that's going on there. Um, the Towns Memorial Day, uh, remember it serves was outstanding, had, you, you did a wonderful job, and, um, scouts were there, um, you have the volunteers, they're gonna recognize the sacrifices of the military men and women that made us what we are. Uh, and on that note, before we see each other in the next meeting, we're gonna celebrate the two-hundred-and-forty-eighth anniversary of the greatest nation on the face of the earth. Uh, show your patriotism, live it every single day, uh, thank God for this country, uh, even in the worst of times, quoting Charlie Daniels, we may have done a little bit of fighting amongst ourselves, but you outside people, that's the thing.
Thank you. Mr. Darnold?
I'll be quick, uh, when you might. Um, going back to where we, uh, started earlier, I'd like to extend my congratulations to Liv and Brian, Wilson and Andrews, who are getting the, um, Strength and Honor Fund of the Fire Department, so congratulations to all. Uh, also, to give some of your family, we'll be a blood donor.
Right? The municipal churches.
Uh, I'm back in the blood business. I'm gonna improve to get blood, and I'll, I'll be giving their link, but, uh, we'll make sure that everyone knows that the church is a blood donor, that also is there. The gift committee is all ready.
Mr. Andrews?
I just want to congratulate all the high school graduates, and I was involved in awarding the versions of Oak Ridge Scholarship to a rising senior at the Oak Ridge Military Academy, an outstanding young man, and another, that's a two-thousand-dollar scholarship and five-thousand-dollar scholarship to a graduating senior from Northwest, and was also called in the Strength and Honor, uh, review of the applicants, and so congratulations to all of them. Uh, I also have been very active in the league of municipalities, but I'll talk about that next month. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, as Mr. Darnold mentioned, the blood drive is always on the eve of month, on the eve of the first, uh, on the second Monday of every month, of every eve of month, Baptist Church has a blood drive, so it makes it real easy because then it takes its pass. If you're able to give blood, if you do, unfortunately, I want, uh, a blood thinner so I can, um, give, um, yeah, no, and, um, as, uh, Sam mentioned, uh, I did not realize this, our Fire Department is first called for a lot of the apartments down by sixty-eight, uh, by, uh, seventy-three and sixty-eight, I just don't know that. Uh, I, if there's no objection from council, I will be joining the Mayor's Association. Uh, also Lions Club did give out a scholarship also to a, uh, graduating senior, Joshua Allen, that's a fifteen-hundred-dollar check. It always amazes me, the volunteer that made the service that Northwest High School kids do, it is amazing what these kids do. So, with that, we need to. Now, motion goes.
Do you want to get out?
Yes.
Monday, uh, evening, this day of Fire Department meeting at seven, seven thirty-six.
You can have ice cream?
Uh, yes.
Okay. It's worth just to go for the ice cream, it's homemade ice cream itself.
I can't guarantee it will be homemade.
Really?
I'm ahead of it.
All right. Okay, do we have to be all little things? Or can we just say we're going to the closed session and discuss things for a while? What's that? We just say we're going to?
I live at the government post.
Your money? A second? All right, I guess we don't forget the little detail. All those in favor, we shouldn't be that long, uh, we're gonna go into a closed session and discuss anything that matters to our attorney. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Good.